Welcome, everybody. Thank you for joining the Norton Planning Board meeting Tuesday, December 20th. This is a hybrid meeting. Members of the public are welcome to participate in person or remotely via the Zoom meeting. The Zoom meeting information is posted on the meeting agenda, including a link, a meeting ID number to join via the app, as well as a phone number to join via phone directly. The meeting will also be here on Norton Cable Access Channel 15. If you are unable to attend future meetings and you would like to submit comments or questions to the board related to the agenda items, please feel free to email Brian Carmichael, Town Staff, whose email is listed on this meeting agenda. So, thank you very much, everyone, for joining. I just want to start by saying a very warm welcome to Maria, our new Town Planner, who's joining us for this evening's meeting. Thank you very much for joining, and we've got a busy agenda for the first meeting.
Thanks for having me.
Sure, it's a great memo.
Oh, you do?
She does, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, as I may have alluded to earlier, we do have a lengthy agenda this evening, so we will try and move through this as quickly and efficiently as possible. We do not have a specific time when the meeting will "be called for darkness," to borrow from the Red Sox. But when we get to a point where if we feel we're not able to have productive discussions, then we will take an action and continue the remaining agenda items to our next meeting. But let's hope we don't need to get to that point. So with that out of the way, I'll get into our general business in terms of Planning Board's business and policies. Excuse me. Four members of the board, I think Brian had emailed, that we are looking to have a joint session with the Select Board on December the 28th. That would be in regards to the open position on the board in relation to a potential appointment to fill that seat. Brian, just to confirm, we have one applicant only for that, for that position, correct?
When I was given the draft, there was no set people. It was general.
Okay. But to your knowledge, there's only one?
My knowledge is only one.
Okay. And is that applicant's agenda been shared with the board, or no?
That hasn't been posted yet.
Resume, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. I know I had it, but I wanted to make sure that it didn't get lost in the shuffle in all of the emails, so thank you. So, does anybody have any questions about that process? Obviously, we didn't have a meeting scheduled for next week, because the week between Christmas and New Year is sometimes a challenge. Does anybody have any challenges attending in person or virtually on the 28th? Just making sure that we have form.
I was planning on attending virtually, if that was okay.
As was I.
Okay.
So.
I actually thought, I found out that it's going to be a webinar, and it's not going to be Zoom, so you'd have to probably participate in person, otherwise they won't.
They can invite us as a panelist.
Four people.
Sorry?
They can invite us as a panelist.
Okay.
Excuse me. Can you address the people here? You're talking, or they can hardly hear you, it comes across almost like mumbling. Can you turn around and address the crowd, please?
I will do my best to project, sir. Thank you very much. Okay, so, thank you, Laura. Brian, if you can get in touch with the appropriate person to make sure that we have an invite as much as possible for a virtual meeting, and if that's not possible, just let us know.
Right.
So, okay. In terms of Planning Board business and policies, I don't think we have anything else that we need to discuss at this point, correct? Okay. If you want to take the, we do have a few bills and warrants to review for members of the board. One is a peer review for the Pine Street Cluster, one is office supplies, and the third is in relation to the creation of a Norton Business Association. You can review the invoice here, but that is funded from a grant that is not from the general budget. And the third item on our general business is approval of minutes. Brian, thank you for sending around the minutes for our previous sessions. There were two old minutes and two minutes that were more recent. As we discussed at our last meeting, the minutes that predate the number of members on the board, we did speak with Town Council about that, and Town Council has said that we do have the option for the Chair to approve those, rather than a vote of the board, if we would like to do that, given that I'm the only member of the board who was present for that meeting. If that's something that we are okay going forward in that direction, we can do that. I just look for everybody to be on board with that.
Motion to allow the Chair to approve minutes that existing planning board members were not members at the time.
Second.
Thank you for the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions, I'll abstain since it affects me directly. So that's 4-0-1 in that regard. In relation to the other two sets of minutes that we did have for this meeting, did anybody have any questions in relation to those minutes? And those would be dated June the 28th and July the 19th. I would start with the June the 28th minutes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The first paragraph, that particular meeting was at the, no, I'm sorry, it's the other one. We're doing June 28th?
Earliest first, yes.
That one was at the Media Center? I believe, no, I could do them. They were both at the Media Center. And Mr. Arts is listed as both present and not present. He appears to have been present based on the minutes.
They were updated, though.
They were?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Am I looking at an old version?
Jim Arts being present was updated.
Got it.
Okay.
My apologies.
That's okay, that's why we all check it. Okay. So updating the location of the meetings in the minutes, were there any adjustments to the content of the discussion?
Motion to approve the minutes of June 28th, 2022.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the minutes of June 28th. Is there any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Okay, thank you. And for our minutes of July the 19th.
I'm over to approve the minutes of July 19th. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion to approve the minutes of July the 19th? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? Those minutes are also approved. Brian, thank you very much for getting through those. I know some of those were long ones, so thank you. Okay. The first application on our agenda this evening is 54 Plain Street. This is an A&R endorsement, or an approval not required. If there's somebody from the applicant up here who'd like to speak, please.
Hello. I just can reduce copies and make it a little bit clearer what we're trying to do with the lot division.
And Craig, he has the map up on the screen for you as well.
This is a lot of lines on the plan. What we're called, the division of lots. Craig Skianowski, Rim Engineering, representing Indy Johar, which may be on Zoom, who's supposed to be here tonight. The owner of the property is an expert patriot. This is 54 Plain Street, is the Plain Street Solar Project that was approved back in 2019, is completely constructed. Existing house directly abuts the LG North School. And Mr. Johar is looking to divide the land so he can remove the existing house and rebuild in the same location, in performance with the zoning setbacks for that, for Lot 1. So I outlined in green what we're calling Lot 1, the remainder of the land is existing solar farm, is existing gravel driveway with telephone poles and infrastructure that leads out to the solar farm, that would all run through Lot 1, through adhesment. And as I said, the intention is to remove the existing house and rebuild in that, on Lot 1. And there's nothing planned for the solar farm, it'll remain as it is.
Thank you for answering my initial question that I was willing to have. As I recall, when this project was approved, the applicant was going to use that existing structure for an office, so if that's going to continue.
The house is abandoned, it's pretty boarded up, it hasn't been, nothing's been in there for, I mean, this was, that was approved in 2019, I would say that house is not in touch since then.
I think that was originally the plan, but obviously, things change.
Right.
Okay. And Maria, I know you looked at this plan and everything conforms to the requirements of an A&R.
Yes, it does.
Okay. Any members of the board have any specific questions as it relates to the application here? Any comments from anybody else in the room as it relates to this project?
Could you just tell us what an A&R is for some of us who are new?
Sure. An A&R is an approval not required. It's a part of the zoning bylaw, which basically says if it meets certain criteria, the board can endorse the change, rather than a special permit or a site plan review. It's generally just dividing lot lines on the map. It generally doesn't relate to new construction or something like that. I have two lots, I want to make them one lot, or I have one lot and I want to make it two lots, or something like that.
Thank you.
If there are no further comments, look for action.
Motion to endorse A&R 17376.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Alan, for the motion, and Wayne for the second. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to endorse, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? Okay. Brian, do we have the milars there?
I can put them over there.
Over on the table? Perfect. And we'll try and get to those at the end, if you don't mind.
I can pick it up, Clyde can pick it up sometime during the week.
Perfect, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Next on our agenda is another A&R endorsement, this is for 38 Barrows Street. I'm not sure if we have somebody here attending virtually or in person, as they move in the back, so, oh, never mind. Okay. Brian, do you know if somebody was planning to attend?
Well, I recall when we did 38 Barrows before, they didn't attend, so probably not.
That's, that's fine. So this is taking, they did one A&R to divide a lot, and this is a further subdivision of one of those new lots, correct? And again, Maria reviewed this one as well, and in your memo, you noted this also met all the guidelines for an A&R?
Yes.
All the lot ceilings. Fairly straightforward. I love it when lots are squares. Does anybody have any questions or comments in relation to this project, this endorsement?
Motion to endorse A&R number 17427.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Thank you, Laura and Eric. Is there any further discussion with the motion to endorse the A&R for 38 Barrows Okay. Hearing nothing further, all in favor of the motion to endorse, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? Okay. And did they provide milars as well, or they?
Yes, they're all.
Perfect. Okay. Now moving into the public hearing section of our agenda, getting into the fun part. First item on our agenda is a continuation of 280 South Washington Street. The applicant is seeking another continuance to January 31st. Brian, do you expect this may be withdrawn at that point, or are you not sure?
I'm not sure, because we do have another settlement to sign off on, which is another thing for the Select Board, Planning Board, joint meeting.
So obviously, this is a large number of continuances for anyone's application, but given that it's been going back and forth with legal, I'm inclined to let it keep going. Does anybody have any further questions or discussion?
Motion to continue SP 12737 to January 31st.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue to January the 31st, 2023. Any further discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, abstentions? Okay. Next item on our agenda is SP 17104, this is for Zero King Philip Road. And is that, you said, correct?
Correct.
Okay. If you could just state your name for the record, please.
Sir, my name's Elliot Bryan, an attorney in North Attleboro, Massachusetts. I represent the applicant tonight, Lindsay Street LLC. Timothy Infante is present with me this evening. Pursuant to your bylaw, 17513.4C, my client procedurally had come before the zoning board in the past, had obtained a variance for a single failing lot to be constructed in a floodplain. Subsequent to that, my client appeared before the Conservation Commission a number of times. Some very good points brought out by Mr. Thomas. You've incorporated those points into the plan. You can see the plan right there. All the flood calculations have been redone and re-certified by an independent engineer. I had an occasion to meet last Friday with Mr. Thomas, I think it was their first day on the job, almost. And then the building inspector joined us, Nick. We had a good meeting, we talked all through the process, and I said, you know, pursuant to your bylaw, because I'm in the floodplain, we have to be before the planning board, it's a special permit process, you have the right certainly to, I think attorney uses routing to different boards, and you see some comments. I know that Mr. Thomas was reviewing the most recent plan that was submitted last Friday. We come here tonight to obtain a special permit to proceed in the construction process.
Okay.
Happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, Maria, I know you've met with the applicant, you've provided some comments to us with your view of the application as it relates to building in the floodplain. So in terms of the criteria that would need to be met for us to grant that relief?
Yes.
Did you want to provide any further color on that?
Yes, so I also got some abutters emailing asking about the property, so just for anyone out there who's listening in on this, it's interesting, King Philip. The issue right now for a special permit is that this property is located on a floodzone, an AE zone, and partly an X zone. It's also, the proposed building is going to be partly located on a 25-foot buffer for wetlands, because there's nowhere else a building can go on the lot, that is the best location for it. However, this proposed plan may or may not be located on a floodway, and if it is located on a floodway, then we cannot issue a special permit as per our bylaw 175-13.4, special permit uses. So a definition of a floodway is the channel of a river or other water source, and the adjacent land areas that shall be reserved in order to discharge the base flood without cumulatively increasing the water surface elevation. In this property, there is a stream on site, and the planning board should decide whether a stream would qualify as a floodway or not, and issue or not issue a special permit based on that. I think after I talked to the Conservation Director and the Building Inspector, my recommendation is having a certified wetland scientist prove that the parcel is not in a floodway zone, if you want to rely on expert counsel, otherwise.
Otherwise, it would be us to make that determination.
Yes, that is my opinion, unless you feel comfortable determining whether it's a floodway or not.
Okay. Now, if we could just silence that? No worries, how does everybody?
If I may, just partially address concerns.
Please do.
I was on the road today, so I do apologize, I drove in from out of town. I did receive today a letter from, addressed to Chair, regarding floodplain certification from Tilton Associates regarding Lot 142 AP0 King Philip Road, Norton, Mass. Dim Mr. Griffin. Tilton Associates, representing our client Lindsay Street LLC, for the floodplain determination of Lot 42 AP0 King Philip Road, Norton, Mass. I hereby certify that Lot 142 AP0 King Philip Road, North Attleboro, Mass, lies entirely within the floodplain designated as FEMA Zone AE, as shown in the FEMA floodplain map, number such and such map effective July 7, 2009. So I think it addressed a portion of what Maria had mentioned. The issue regarding "a stream," I physically walked the property, I'm not a wetland scientist, I'm not an engineer, I'd be happy if you wanted to do some additional research. This is a, I think closer to a depression in the ground that has long since been inactive. But that's, again, I'm going to leave that to someone, I think the purpose of your statute is to circulate it amongst your boards and make the appropriate decision.
And to confirm, the letter that you referred to, that was dated?
Today.
Today.
I'm going to email that to the board.
Okay, so that, so that is documentated, so the board is not reviewing yet?
Correct.
Okay.
I literally just got it.
That's, understand, that's how email works?
Yep.
So essentially, the board obviously hasn't had a chance to review the documentation in terms of looking at that letter and/or determining whether or not this is a floodway via our own assessment in another way. How do the other members feel we should be proceeding? Obviously, we want to review the letter, are there other steps that we feel would be necessary to proceed in one way or another with this application?
We don't have a letter from Conservation or anything either, correct?
No.
I haven't seen anything from Conservation.
I would recommend you request one from Conservation and maybe the Building Commissioner, you know, to build on the floodplain, it's too.
I think a formal letter from Conservation, bare minimum, but I don't know if it should be carried here or not, I'd probably be more comfortable with some additional of the added, myself.
The letters from the Building Inspector and the Conservation Director would just kind of formalize the discussion.
Correct.
The applicant.
Correct.
That makes sense.
I do want to point out that that was the process that we had discussed with Maria last Friday, that we would be here tonight with the anticipation that the Conservation Commission would file something, because we're scheduled, I believe, January 9th for the next Conservation hearing, so the timing seemed to work appropriately.
So theoretically, not jumping ahead January 30th?
I don't know when your next meeting is.
Is it 30th?
It's the 17th and 31st.
Is there anything additional that we feel is appropriate at this time? Obviously, the board has done a site visit in a while, if that's something that we feel is appropriate, that's something that we could potentially request, if something, a step beyond Google Earth is something that we're looking for. Or do we feel that the letter from the Tilton Associates, as well as the Conservation Director and the Building Inspector, is what we'd be comfortable with?
Yeah, I think if the Director kind of backs up the letter from Tilton, has no problems with it, and that's.
I'm kind of confused about the letter from Tilton.
Which we do not have.
Right, but, and again, apologies, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you said, they made the determination that this is in the floodplain district.
Floodplain, not floodway, correct.
Okay.
Floodplain.
What the question is now at hand is whether this is a floodway.
Correct. As a subpart definition, being a potential stream on the property.
Correct.
So if it's in a floodplain and there's no stream, I think Maria would agree.
It is buildable.
Buildable. If it's in a floodplain with a stream that assists in having water get off the property, that's an issue for us.
Okay.
We don't believe it is, the engineers don't, Lucas Engineering, Tilton Associates doesn't, but I'm happy to have that confirmed.
Are they a certified wetland scientist?
I'm sorry?
Are they?
Yes, Chris Lucas is a certified wetland scientist, Tilton Associates are the engineers.
Then I think we need the certified wetland scientist to give us the certification that this is not a floodway.
Happy to do that. Yeah, I have.
I would also like to get a narrative of the discussions from Conservation, not just a determination, please.
In terms of timing, Brian, you say our meetings are the 17th and the 31st of January, correct?
Correct.
Given the process that you have in motion with other boards, I think you mentioned Conservation, is, do you have a preference between one of those meetings?
January 17th, please.
Okay. And we feel, and we feel that that would be enough time to get any other documentation that we need from Town Staff?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Based on our meetings, I agree with that.
Okay. As this is a public hearing, just want to make sure that any members of the public that are here for Zero King Philip do have an opportunity to ask questions?
Yeah.
Sir, yep. Have you been coming up to the podium? And just state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Brian Brady, I live at 82 King Philip Road, I bought the property. And I just want to couple one point is, the last time we had a major flood, probably just before sewage went in down the lake, this area did flood out, with the lake that brought the stream and everything else and flooded to my property, flooded near my house. And my concerns are that any building on that property at all might change that for the next time we have a flood. We may not have it 10 years, 15 years, but there's probably going to be another one down the road. And I'm just concerned with the effects it's going to have on my property and my neighbors. And I'm just concerned with the effects it's going to have on my property and my neighbors. So that's, that's my major concern with that.
Thank you.
Upside of the lot being as small as it is, it shouldn't be built on, but.
Understood.
Yeah.
And this would, Maria, this would fall under stormwater bylaws, correct?
Yes.
So just as a, as part of the Norton Stormwater Bylaw. The stormwater bylaws essentially require that new construction, and I'm going to simplify this and take it out of engineering, is that it's a net. It can't be a net negative in terms of water leaving the site. So whatever water leaves the site now in terms of volume, that's the cap. Other than any impervious surface like a building or a parking lot or a garage needs to be accounted for with storage and drainage within the site.
My, my concerns the last time were, you know, I had two sump pumps going alone on my property and, you know, the water's coming from them.
You don't want to have any more straws on the camp.
And that, that did flow at one time steady years ago. I mean, whether it's, you know, we've had a couple of drought years doing everything else. If there's a couple of those big rainstorms, then.
Well, the nature doesn't like to be normal. I understand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else here in person have any comments they'd like to make at this time? Also ramble for a few seconds in case anybody on the Zoom meeting would like to speak. If you're on the virtual meeting and you'd like to participate, I'd ask if you could please try to use the reactions function via Zoom and either raise your hand or make some other kind of motion. We'll see that in the meeting and make sure that you have an opportunity to speak. So I've now rambled for long enough that I think I've given people an opportunity to do so. The applicant had expressed a willingness to continue to our January 17th meeting. Is there any further questions or comments at this time?
Motion to continue, SP 17104 to January 17th. Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue to the 17th? Okay. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
See you again next year.
7:15?
That should be the start time.
Yep, thank you so much. Have a good holidays.
Thank you. Okay. The next item on our agenda is site plan reviews 17285 and 17290. That's 353 and 355 Old Colony Road. I know we had plans and a memo from Maria in our files in relation to this project. As a response to some of those comments there, see it continue, it's to January 20, January 17th as well. Does anybody have any questions or comments at this point?
A motion to continue, SPR 17285 and 17290, January 17th.
And we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay. All in favor of continuing to January 17th, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Here, continue to the 17th. Moving right along to our fourth public hearing. This is five special permits here. We have special permit 17381, 17382, 17383, 17384, and wouldn't you know, 17835. That is 192 Taunton Avenue. And I, do we have anybody here in person who'd like to speak to that? I do, there we do, perfect. If you'd like to just come up to the podium. And we should be able to share something on the screen as well for people viewing the meeting virtually. I'll give you a minute to sit up and stop rambling at you. Sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I don't see application 17385 in permit types.
Okay. I know we saw the documentation, but I will admit I did not check to make sure there were five entries. I do only see four.
There are four.
Okay. Is the 35 for the common driveway area, so potentially?
It was just the part before.
Okay, there's five permits listed on the agenda, so if we can just confirm one way or another?
No, it is four.
Okay.
I just added one more by mistake.
Okay, so there is no 1735. So thank you, Laura. I had not even noticed that. Okay.
Okay.
And you just go with the name and your firm and we'll go from there?
Okay. Good evening. My name's Peter LaVoy. I work with D and L Design Group. I am the engineer on this project. I'm here, I am representing Lobosur and Fiera Construction. They are out of Milford, Mass, as well as D and L Design Group is out of Milford, Mass. So the project is located at 192 Taunton Ave. Taunton Ave runs along the bottom of the page. It's basically at an intersection. Old Taunton Ave is coming from the right-hand side of the plan. Taunton Ave runs along the bottom and I think it's called Woodward Street. It's right across at this intersection.
It's across from the church and the school, basically.
Correct, correct, yep. So there is an existing house and garage on the parcel right now. The parcel is roughly 24 acres in size. It was in front of the planning board in July and the lot was subdivided into five lots. Four lots that had frontage and area. And there was one large piece that was at the back of the lot that will stay undisturbed. That's not going to be disturbed at all. So the parcel has the house and the garage on it, which is right up at the intersection. There's an existing driveway that comes in. There's kind of like a small field to the right of the parcel and the rest of the lot is undisturbed. There has been a lot of earthwork. You know, if you go out there, we did do soil testing with the border health probably two weeks ago and there is a lot of, you know, there's a cop path out to the back where there's a clearing, there's a truck back there and stuff like that. But majority of the parcel is not disturbed. It does slope. It's flat near the front and then slopes towards the west where there is a wetland on the left-hand side of the plan. There's also a wetland towards the back. The wetlands were flagged by Goddard Consulting to do the A and R plan in July. So that's how we came up with, the previous engineer came up with the upland area in the wetland area was through that wetland flag, flagging. So what we want to do is we want to put a duplex on each of the A and R lots that were cut out. Each lot is, it meets the requirement. It is roughly 80, it has 80,000 square feet. So each lot has 80,000 square feet. We also, some of the lots are a little bit bigger because of the way the lots are shaped. We have to meet the shape factor for the buildable lot. So, but each lot does meet the frontage, the area and the shape factor. As you can see, we have three duplexes across the front off of old Taunton Ave. And then we have one duplex way in the back, also coming off of Taunton Ave. So when we were looking at putting these duplexes and looking at the driveway, the reason why we went with the common drive is because the frontage for the lot in the back, if you look, it comes off of Taunton Ave. So one, because of safety, we decided that wasn't a good location for another driveway. Plus the grade, it drops off pretty steep if you look at that one lot. You come right off, there's a guardrail and then it just drops right down. So by putting a driveway in that location, you know, it would disturb a lot, a lot of disturbance. Also wetlands, we tried to preserve the wetland, keep that buffer from where that existing house is towards that wetland. So we decided to go with the common drive for lots three and four. So as you can see, lot three is kind of turned and the driveway, the house is facing into lot two, which is right here. This is lot three down here. So the driveway faces into the common drive right here. And then the common, well, we, we thought that the common drive basically stopped here because that's where the two, but this is just our interpretation of the common drive bylaw. So we thought that because the, the two lots, these two lots were using this driveway up to this point here, that we thought that was the common drive. But the distance from the property line to the structure is 560. But we can adjust that because we just, we did just get those comments today. So I just wanted to kind of explain that.
We have had similar discussions about what is the common driveway portion of the common driveway?
Correct, that's what, that, that was just our interpretation was the first 150 feet of that, of this driveway was the common drive. And then the rest was just a regular driveway to the duplex structure. But we can, we can talk about that. So we're here tonight because of basically five special permits. The four duplexes, that's an automatic special permit that we have to go for. And then the, the common drive is the fifth special permit, which is associated with lot three and lot four. So I think we added those, that special permit to the, the application for lot three and lot four when we filed those. All four lots will be serviced by Town Water. All four lots will have, you know, individual septic system. We have done soil testing with the border health that was witnessed. The soil out here is an A soil, which is very sandy. All roofs will be recharged into the ground. Basically, we are working on filing with conservation. But we wanted to see how this special permit went before we went, you know, forward with conservation. I can go through the comment letter that I got today and if you want. If you want me to take questions right now, I can take questions.
Sure. I'm not going to put you on the spot for a letter you just got today.
No, that's fine.
In terms of Maria was able to pull up the bylaws that relates to the common drive.
Mm-hmm.
So I'm just going to steal your paper here. So the distance of the common driveway measured from the street line to the point where any principal building is proposed, which I'll now see is a 500 feet unless the planning board makes the determination that it's reasonable access. So where any principal building is proposed would seem to suggest that that would relate to the building in the back.
Correct.
What is the width of the driveway way in the back there?
So the driveway up to this point here is 24 feet wide. And then it splits into two 12-foot wide driveways to each unit.
That would be pretty tight for a fire apparatus to get out of there if they got in, I'm assuming.
Well, we could increase the size of the impervious area.
But that's obviously not what you're trying to do in the middle of green area.
Correct. So it's, it's, it's a 450 rate to this point here. So the 500 feet goes right to where the septic system is, as you can see. You can see the septic in the front yard. That's basically 500 feet right there. So we, we do have the ability to move the structure forward. So, you know, like I said, we just got this letter, so we wanted to see. And then it also said that the planning board, if we gave adequate access, that they could grant us that 560 if they wanted to. If not, that's, you know, that's fine. We can go back and look at that.
I think we need fire to weigh in on that, though.
Whether they feel there's sufficient access?
Hundred percent.
They also need it to turn around, right?
That was my thought, yeah. They could get in, but could they get out? I don't know. Not well.
Right, so we could work on that. You know, right now, like I said, that's a 20, that, that area right there is roughly a, it's like a 25-foot radius. We could do like a, like a T. We could increase the size of the two 12s. So the truck could pull up one of the driveways and then back up to, you know, back around and then come out like, I forget what they call it, it's like a hammerhead or something like that. We could do that. We could look at that. We could sit, I could sit down with the fire chief and, you know, if he wanted me to do a truck turn, I could do that. You know, if he gives me the, the radius of his fire trucks, I could, I could do that. I could meet with him.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, it's kind of, the alternative there, I guess, is if the board has a, if the board wants to give a nudge one way or another, or inclined to want you to bring it forward and not, and that access is questionable, then we should probably tell you that now.
Right, so if you can give, I would think if you could give safe access, if a truck, if a fire truck did get in there, by keeping the structure back there, we can increase, you're not, you're not going to have to make it tight. So by giving us the 560, we could increase the two driveways on either side, kind of open that up a little bit and it doesn't affect the structure. Because as you, as you go back, if you look to the topography on the west of that driveway, it drops off pretty quick. So what we tried to do is, that's why we kind of also did the common drive, because this drops off. So we're trying to keep the driveway up as high as we can. We're trying to cut right here and balance this. As you come up with that little four barriers, that's not an infiltration basin. That just collects the runoff to treat the runoff. No infiltration is being proposed in that location. But that's the reason why we kept it this way and not, you know, we're trying to keep that natural down towards the, towards that well. So we're trying to do a, a balance of cuts and fills in that one location. That's kind of the toughest spot right there. So by, so by keeping the structure back here, we're, we would be able to open this up a little bit because the septic system can be moved closer. This area right here where it is green, we could do a bigger circle, maybe with a landscape island in the middle, if, you know what I mean? Or a multiple island so that the truck could, the fire truck could, you know, gain access in that area. So by keeping that structure back, it kind of helps with, you know, opening that area up. Now that I know that, you know, if the fire chief wants something, I can try to address that.
So in relation to this point specifically, do we feel like working with, that we would prefer the applicant work with fire for access in relation to this site plan as opposed to trying to move the building up? Is that?
One thing, if the length of the driveway is so that they can achieve a grade that's gentle enough that for the fire trucks as well?
Yeah, they're trying to avoid the steepest gradients.
Right.
Right, and I think the driveway right now, the way it's graded, it's, it's 3%. So it's not a steep driveway, you know, by doing that cut and fill balance at that one spot. You know, we, we just, we're coming down from Taunton Ave and then we're kind of belling, that's kind of a low point right there. And then it starts to come back up. We're kind of trying to, you know, we're working with the grade.
Okay.
But it's, so it's not, like you said, it's not steep. It is kind of a, a nice slow driveway.
Okay. Maria, I know you had a few comments in relation to this. I know a lot of it was in relation to the common driveway, but there were some additional pieces of documentation that you thought you were missing in relation to this application, just in terms of, um, different items.
Yeah, so maintenance, repair, liability are required under the definition for common driveway, item H. Just, you know, easement to certain covenants or other legal devices. Who's going to maintain that driveway, repair it, who's going to be liable for it? And all public utilities, it shall remain perpetually the responsibility of the private parties. So just want to have something in writing.
Right, can we, like. Right, uh, can we, like I said, we'll get that from uh, my client's legal.
Okay. And uh, I know, I'm sorry to memo box you, it's week three for me to have been writing it.
No, I understand, I understand, no problem.
Um, what about the landscape buffer area for lot three and two?
Yeah, so lot three and two, so, so uh, that, by doing, by looking at that today, uh, this afternoon, we looked at it and one thing had come up, my client was also, because you see you have one, two, three, four, five driveways onto Old Taunton. He, he suggested if we took that one driveway on lot two, on unit one, and went into the common drive and made that part of, part of the common drive. So then you would only have three driveways on Old Taunton and then the common drive.
You cannot exceed more than four units per common driveway.
So yes, so, so it's not, not structures, it's not structures, it's number of units, so you can't do that, okay?
Let me um, let me double check that. I don't wanna give you the wrong information.
I just thought it might be four lots, but-
Um, I think you might be, a private driveway providing vehicle access for at least two, but no more than four building lots.
Building lots, so that would only be three building lots. So we could, so by doing that, my client would, he would, cause if you go out there now, you can see that nice stone wall, that's the existing driveway. So that, that, that driveway would not change. And he could add more landscaping on that side for lot two, even though it would be part of the common drive. So we would have to amend our special permit for lot two and add the common drive special permit to that. But he was amenable to that and it also, it kind of works out better cause then now you're, you're getting rid of one of the driveways on that street. So I didn't know, that was gonna be a question, what the plan board thought of that.
Okay. Yeah, it's a challenging intersection.
Correct.
Going one step further, could you combine those other two driveways into another common driveway?
One and two, like so you, so, yeah, I don't know, I'd have to, I'd have to talk to my client about that.
Just a thought.
So just like, so unit, units two and unit one, one and two. I'd have to talk to him about that.
And, and I just have to note that the stone wall that's there now is to be removed?
Yeah, only in the section where the driveways would-
So it would remain other than where the driveways are?
Yeah, that's why this, so what's good, what's good is um, the grade's not really gonna change too much out here because groundwater is not an issue with the septic. And that would determine the elevation of the structures. So because groundwater is not an issue, that front, that stone wall can stay where it is and the grade in that field is basically gonna stay the way it is. It's just gonna be raised a little bit up at the, at the units so any surface water can, can just flow away from the foundation. So um, I can look at lots, like I could look at that common drive, but I, I don't really see that he would go for that, but I can ask him.
Okay.
It was more because, you know, we have, we have that driveway there and it's right there. So we minum, we also reduced the, the impervious by getting rid of, by getting rid of that. It's only thirty, it's like thirty-three feet to the common drive from that unit one on lot two. So you get rid of all that pavement, you can keep the stone wall. So yet that opening can be dressed up with some veg- you know, with some landscaping as well. He would want to do landscaping on lots three and two on the entrance on the way in.
Okay.
Cause it's gonna be right there at the common drive and both of those are like thirty-three feet from structure to the common drive.
Okay. Okay. Any members of the board have any further comments or questions for this applicant? I know we did have some members here, a public here personally, maybe wanted to comment on this project, so. If we're a bit holding for a second, I'll turn around and see if anyone would like to come up and speak in relation to. If you wanna just come over here, come up to the podium please, so we can. And again, if anybody joining the Zoom meeting would like to speak, please try to use the reactions function in the Zoom and we'll try and go back and forth in person and virtual as much as we can and give everybody the opportunity to speak. Uh, so if you just say your name and address-
Marshall Martin, one seventy Taunton Avenue. I've lived in this neighborhood my whole life. Got a couple of questions. Is this five members here tonight present?
Correct.
And there's two absent?
There's one absent and there's one position vacant. One member resigned a couple of months ago.
So when you vote on this, the, the five people here tonight will be the ones voting? The reason why I ask, cause I was on this board twenty years ago and I know that we couldn't vote, if we didn't attend to hearing, we couldn't vote on it. That's why I brought this up.
Yes. Let's see, I probably used the wrong term for legislation. Uh, there is legislation called the Ballin Act where voters can miss one hearing of an agenda item. And then view the, view the information discussed at the meeting, sign documentation. If they miss more than one session, um, they cannot vote on that agenda item.
Okay.
But in that case, in most cases, yes, if you're not here for the meeting, then you can't vote on it. If you're not a member of the board, you can't vote on it.
Okay, one other thing. So May ninth, I think it was nineteen ninety-four, the town meeting voted to make Old Taunton Ave a scenic way. And that's chapter forty-eight, section fifteen C, I think requires no, notice in a local publication two weeks apart in a public hearing and it addresses cutting trees and stone walls. So I'd like to bring that up. And the other thing is, I'm opposed to the duplexes. I, I don't really care about the common driveway, but uh, it's a nice neighborhood. There's no duplexes in the neighborhood at all. And uh, I, I feel this is an attack by someone from out of town coming in and trying to make some quick money. By right, they have the right to build four single-family houses here. And that's the way I think it should be. I know not too, maybe a year or so ago, someone down on Meadow Brook, it's like this neighborhood's being attacked from both sides. They wanted to build four duplexes down there. I don't know of these common driveways and I, I know about the common driveways, but building a bunch of duplexes in a residential one neighborhood in order to have zoning, you should, if you're not gonna have zoning, then everyone can do whatever they want anywhere. But I remember when zoning was passed in nineteen seventy-four, before that, you could do whatever you wanted anywhere. So to make the town nice, I know you, there's a lot of village commercial and everything. And you're trying to do the right thing, but I feel approval of this would be a big mistake. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And if you wanna come back on the board, just remember.
Ten years was enough.
Okay. And I thought we had somebody else who was looking to come up?
I'm good.
All set?
That's what I wanted to say.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hello, everybody, my name's Clay Bridges, I live at two twenty-seven Taunton Ave, Old Taunton Ave. So I'm new to all of this, so excuse my ignorance, I'm gonna ask a few questions. I'm curious what the criteria are for approval of these special permits. What are the special permits required for? And what are the criteria that determine whether the special permits will be approved?
Okay. I'm happy to pull that up. And I can put it in writing here.
Okay.
Do you have additional questions that you wanted to ask now as I get that up on the screen for you here?
Sure. Um, well, I've kind of taken the pulse of the neighborhood a little bit and there's, we're not pro to this project. Particularly the duplex aspect, it's gonna dump a lot of, if there are duplexes there, we'll dump a lot of traffic out into a kind of fraught intersection already. I don't know if there's a traffic study that's been done of this.
Uh, I don't believe there's been a traffic study done.
I don't know if it would be required that or if it'd be uh, prudent. But uh, yes, and as Marshall said, it's a single-family, you know, non-dense area. This utterly destroys that uh, character of the neighborhood. I don't know what standing we have as the residents around it, but it's not popular.
Okay. Yeah, I, I can't speak to every instance where a traffic study has been done. Uh, I don't think that this would generally be a large product where it could generally require one.
I understand.
Of course, as I promised to pull up the special permit criteria for you, I have not been able to find it here. There's a bullet, I'm looking for the bullet point list of four or five things. Essentially it in the absence of finding that, which is in the zoning bylaws, and I know I've seen it eighteen times.
I gotta write it down.
You do?
Yeah.
Okay. Gonna pass it down here. Apparently searching special was not sufficient for me.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if delving in, delving into this-
Here we go, yeah. So the criteria for a special permit is the board shall find that the exception or the reason for the permit is socially and economically desirable, that it would satisfy an existing need, that the advantage of the proposal outweighed by far any detrimental effects. And that such effects on the neighborhood environment shall not be significantly greater than could be expected from development if the permit was denied. That the applicant has no reasonable available alternative to accomplish this purpose and that the specific conditions to minimize detrimental effects and protect the neighborhood have been imposed and necessary secured by bond and it continues.
True.
Uh, but the, the net of that is that, the big part of that is the board has defined that the permit is socially and economically desirable and outweighs any negatives.
Yeah. Uh, what's the need?
The need?
Yeah, that's in there, isn't it?
Yes, the need would be for additional housing, additional development, growing the tax base quote unquote. I'm sure it returned town meetings for the last, how many meetings? Any of those things could follow in the need.
Right, but the needs of the community-
Are also part of that.
Are also part of that and personally, I feel like they're not really being addressed. I feel like the needs of another community is being, are outweighing the needs of our community to people who actually live in this neighborhood. Are, is there gonna be a vote on these special permits tonight?
I always hesitate to say one way or another, I think that uh, my understanding is that I, I think, I apologize if I'm speaking for the other members here, but I feel like there is still documentation needs to be back and forth and additional things that need to be reviewed.
Sure.
So my short answer to that would be, I don't think so.
Thank you here for hearing me.
Okay. I don't see anybody in the virtual meeting with their hand up here. Maria, I just wanted to ask one question as related to the-
Oh, Paul, did you want to?
First comment I could ask.
Yeah, I think there are a few more.
Just a few more. That's okay. If you don't mind, I'm just gonna ask one clarifying question to the player here. The first commenter had mentioned the noticing, I know this was, this was noticed, correct, for the special permit?
But it wasn't, as Marshall said, for the stone cutting.
For the scenic, correct. Can we confirm any logistics that, confirm that that, whether that is still in place and whether there are any additional requirements that need to be had for that?
See if we met them, if not, we might have to re-advertise.
I'm sure. Okay. Go right ahead, sir.
Paul Houlihan, two oh one Old Taunton Ave. I have a few questions about them, about the block plans. The duplexes, how many bedrooms per dup- per side?
Sir, I'm just gonna ask, if you can um, direct any questions to the board?
Okay.
There are questions that, uh, I'll have you run through your questions and if there are questions I can answer, I'll do that. If there are questions that I like the applicant answer, I'll do that. We try to avoid the um, cross-examination kind of format. So, number of bedrooms?
Yes, how many bedrooms would there be per duplex?
Okay.
Also, when this property first went on sale, our housing prices dropped drastically as of that. What, I was wondering what the, the proposed prices of these units per unit? Because our property values are at this point right now and these get built, it's gonna drop all our property values drastically.
Okay.
Okay, it's not the area for any duplexes. We've never had duplexes, never want them. You know, multi-home, multi-family homes are just not what this area is about. We have a good distance between all our homes. We don't need to have like a crowded area starting in our town, in our street. So that's pretty much what they're gonna say.
Okay. And I'll, and I'll just, I'll say that's, that's why in this zone duplexes are by a special permit, they're not by right. So that's why it's here?
Right.
So, thank you. And I was asking, if you wanna just come up quick, just to comment on those questions. Have you gone down the path of far enough knowing the plans for roughly how many bedrooms would be proposed in each unit? And whether they would be um, sold and or rented?
They would be sold. Each unit would have three bedrooms. The septic systems are designed for six bedrooms total. Price-wise, I don't have that answer. I'm just an engineer.
That's fine. You don't need to know all the answers, I'm just asking the questions. Thank you. Okay. Okay. And I'll just say, um, Terry, I'm sorry, I can't accept comments from the Zoom chat into the meeting agenda. If you'd like to come off mute and just state your name and address for the record with your comment, we'd be happy to do so. But too many times the chat in the Zoom meeting turns into Twitter. So, if you're able to come off mute, you don't need to come on camera if you don't want to. Um, but I see you on camera there, if you'd like to um, come off mute and say what you're looking to comment, please do.
No, we just, I just wanna say, you know, uh, we are agreement with our neighbors uh, one hundred percent in this matter. Uh, we don't think that uh, we need any duplexes in the area. We bought on this screen for a reason and we'd like to keep it that way. That's all I'm gonna say.
And if you could just say your address for the record, please, just for-
Two oh five Old Taunton Ave.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Okay. And is there anyone else in person here who's- Please do.
So my name is Lauren Gonzo, one ninety-seven Old Taunton Ave. Which means my house is right across the street here from one, two, three, four proposed driveways.
So you're on?
On one ninety-seven, right across the street.
So across the street from the school?
No, well, across from the street from the school, the back. My house is on one forty.
Okay.
The front of our home faces
Okay.
The proposed duplexes.
Okay.
We bought our home in Nor- we've lived in Nor- in our whole lives, our family. We do public service, we're active in our churches and our community and our neighborhood. We, our front yard and my, our porch is special to us. We have one forty on the back, right? Can't talk in the backyard, we can come out the porch, visit with our neighbors. And that is gonna be totally gone with four driveways and the um, the, the public driveway too. I'm really concerned about the safety of, of all those driveways coming out into that big intersection. And it just totally ruins the scenic byway that we bought into long ago. There is also historic marker on our, on our land across the street that um, you know, I'm just hoping it will stay preserved with everything that's gonna go on. I've lived in this town long enough to know that I can't get mad- I've lived in this town long enough to know that I can't get mad and yell and scream and then go to get my bed. And no one wants this in their front yard. If any of you said this was your only quiet place, do you want a bunch of duplexes put in there? We're gonna say no. I know I can't fight it, but I hope that the board takes serious consideration of the impact on our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay. Would anybody else like to come up and speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, Paul Wannamaker, 217 Town Avenue. I guess they call it, the town hasn't made up their mind yet, didn't have the street as yet.
There's enough things going in town.
I, I think the question of the need has not been addressed. Your answer is, in my opinion, isn't, isn't enough. The only people that seem to be benefiting from this are the developers. And all of us live on that street because of the desirability of the spacing between the houses. It's more residential, et cetera, and this will take away from that completely. And there is a lot of traffic going there. So, I think that's a pretty serious thing, is what is the need? I mean, there, there, I don't think that's been answered appropriately. And if that's one of the criteria in the bylaws, that, that criteria has not been met. And we still don't know what the kind of pricing, is this low-income housing, would you describe it?
Sir, I'm...
Oh, sorry, you, low-income.
The engineer has stated he doesn't, he does, he doesn't know how...
Well, that would be a good answer.
Price range would be, that's...
That would be a good thing to have answered as well.
It's something...
And you got a whole neighborhood against it, I mean, that ought to tell you something.
Yeah.
And there's no need for it in the town. And again, the only people that benefit from this are the developers.
Thank you for your comments. Okay.
There's one more interesting point.
Okay. Making me work my neck out today.
Yeah. My name's Tom McGrath. I live at 213 Old Town Ave. I'm a newbie, I've only lived here for twenty years. But compared to a lot of my neighbors. But I bought into, my wife and I bought into the neighborhood for the exact same reason that Paul and the others have stated. We like the quality of life that we have there. We enjoy a quiet, scenic, almost melancholic little area of town. And the duplexes, they're simply not the right structures to put there, in my humble opinion. I don't know why single-family homes have not been proposed for that. There is one right now on that lot. There's one on every lot, up and down that street, and now we're introducing duplexes. I, I just don't see the changing the character of this area, how that improves our community at all. There's been a lot of people that have addressed all the negatives, and I really haven't heard any positive outcomes of a project like this. So, I'd like you to consider that. What is the positive aspect of this? That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Terry, I want to talk.
I'm Phil Hornwood, Woodbridge Street. And I oppose these duplexes for that one reason. Because I have one house there, I've been here all my life, just like Mr. Mon, all right? Besides that, all the damn traffic we have, coming in and out of Woodbridge Street, Old Town Ave, and buzzing by 140. That forty mile an hour speed limit is ridiculous. They fly from there. And school buses and everything else we have to put up with. In and out, turning in and out. So, I oppose this.
Thank you.
My name's Tom Godso, 197 Old Town Ave. What I have a problem with, okay, I have a problem with all the whole thing, but the other problem, one problem is is these driveways here, okay, when it sprinkles out, okay, I don't care if it's just a haze. My yard gets watered, flooded from the road coming in, so these driveways here, I'm gonna get fully washed out. Not a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Janet Cavillaw, am I, oh, actually, a but, Lot 1, right here.
Okay.
I am as well concerned as the rest of my neighbors with what's gonna be, hopefully, not going on there. I'm not opposed to single families. But again, with the wetlands and everything, and the nature, and the way our neighborhood looks, I'd like to keep it that way. And I think the rest of my neighbors would as well. I have to agree with Mr. Godso, our street is like a racetrack. People coming and going up a desk, that street is crazy. You may all know that coming off of 140, going onto Old Town Ave, it's not a real, real turn. People just come off 140 and just fly around that corner. With additional driveways coming out of there, more problems. It, it's just not a good idea.
It is, it is a heavy-trafficed area with lots of trucks and all sorts of other stuff. Especially going into the industrial park and...
Yep. And I like all of this back here. It's beautiful, this nature up there, this more construction coming in, we're gonna lose that. That would be a shame. So, that's what I think. Thank you.
Don't forget to mention the Trillio and the, the spotted turtles.
Yes. The turtles, I know all of it.
That's right.
I never checked it, I think.
Hi, Tarantino at 212 Old Town Ave. One thing that struck me when I saw this was, it's really kind of funky layout. I mean, you've got this lot that goes way the heck back here, and you've got another one that goes this way, and this one, I, you know, it's up here, it just gives me the feeling that it's being jammed in there just to get it in and make some money on these houses. And I agree, again, with all my neighbors, it just doesn't fit. And we have a lot of traffic at times, people are now using that as a cutthroat. And you've got waste management, and they use, they, they come flying down the street. My kids, our kids used to lay out in the road.
Oh, yeah.
We used to yell at them. They would be dead now if it was the same situation. Please consider. Thank you.
And just to address your comment about the shape of the lot.
Yeah.
Just to get into a, a bit of the zoning nerdage here. That's what the, that's why the zoning code has what's called a shape factor for the lots, which is a whole bunch of engineering math. So, the shape factor boils down to the shape of the lot being regular enough to meet that guideline. So, it, it has met the guidelines in the zoning bylaw for shape factor.
But does it have to do with that square footage? Is that why?
It's a measure, it's a combination of the shape and the size and the frontage and...
Perimeter.
And the perimeter. It's a whole bunch of math. They, I agree that some of the lots do look...
Bizarre.
Funky. They all have from, that's not unusual in development. They all meet the frontage requirements and the shape factor. So, they've, they've checked those boxes, and that's...
What is that back there?
I believe that would be water.
Wetlands, is it? I know we have a lot.
The edge of the wetlands. It's noted as the edge of the wetlands on the map. So...
Okay.
But yes, so, so there are measures in place to guard against somebody doing what's kind of known as a flag lot, where there's a little skinny part and a big part in the back. That's what the shape factor is designed to kind of guard against. These do meet the calculations for shape factor.
Doesn't feel that way, sorry. But, thank you.
Okay. If there's anybody else who'd like to come up and speak? I know that you have a little bit of homework from us in terms of some of the documentation that Maria forwarded you. We had some homework to ensure that the scenic, that we made sure that the scenic byway noticing regulations were all set. In terms of, you mentioned you have lots submitted to conservation, am I correct?
Correct. We have none. I mean, only two of the lots would have to be submitted to conservation, lots 3 and lot 4.
But maybe come back from that, then you change the cyclical, suppose, and then it, yeah?
Correct, but you got, you, we'd like to get an idea. We don't wanna submit this to conservation if we're not gonna get a special permit, you know? Because basically, I mean, these boxes, you know, they could be single-family houses, so it would basically, the houses would be in this location. It would just be, you know, one driveway per lot. You know, I think still, you know, the common drive for, if these were two single families, that common drive probably would be the best scenario, just because of the situation with the wetlands and the grades and the road safety. So, you know, these could be single-family homes, but they'd be in the same locations. It's just that you'd have one driveway per lot.
As you'd only have the one special permit for the...
Correct, it would just be one.
For the common driveway, there'd be no special permits for the single families as opposed to duplexes.
Right. And I, I would think that the, the footprints, you know, would probably be pretty close to the same.
Okay. So, are you looking for guidance from the board at this time? Or do you want to look through the rest of the letter from town staff and come back and...
Well, I did go through the conservation concerns, I did go through, I did add the vernal pool location. I added the floodplain to this plan. So, you can see that's where the vernal pool is, that's a hundred-foot radius around that. So, you know, we're not proposing to disturb any of that. The blue line is the floodplain, so it's all, you know, our grade is up at, I wanna say, what do you call it? Seventy-eight? Seventy-eight, seventy-five, and the floodplain is around sixty-four, sixty-five. So, we're not proposing to fill any floodplain. You know, like I said, we do have to file with conservation at some point. Did do the vernal pool, the A C E C. We're not filling any floodplain, we're not filling any wetlands, so, you know, we meet that requirement. We probably, we would have to submit a stormwater permit for this. That's pretty obvious. Even if you went with the single-family homes, you would have to file this. You know, the two, these two would still be notice of intent for single families as well as the stormwater permit, so we do know that. And so, the big thing I need to do is I need to talk to the fire chief and see what he says about the length.
Sorry, one question. How much soil would you be, would you be taking out of your software this lot?
Basically, the way, the, the way this is, we would, it's kind of a balanced site.
Okay.
So, we wouldn't be taking any material out. I mean, there may be some grading in the back, just to kind of flatten out, because it, it has been worked on. This parcel has been worked on, there are a lot of mounds just sitting out there. But I would say it's a balanced site.
Okay, 'cause any, if you remove over five hundred cubic yards of soil, that's a special permit from the planning board.
Yeah.
That might not be the case here, it's just, I'm just double-check.
Okay. I can check that, too.
Yeah, just, yeah, for sure. Thank you.
So, we weren't, we weren't, you know, trying to, you know, balance the site, because we don't wanna do a lot of export import.
Absolutely.
And if it was, it probably would be export, not, not much. We don't need any import, just because of our soils.
Thank you.
Okay. Any comments from the board at this time?
Yes, one question.
Yeah.
Why is the applicant proposing duplexes rather than single-family homes?
Because the zoning allows us to file for duplexes. I, we were hired to put duplexes on the lot, and that's why we're here. Because it is, it is allowed through a special permit, so he's done duplexes, you know, nice duplexes in Milford, in other area, in other towns as well, so he wanted to, to try down here, you know?
Would he be willing to do single-family homes?
I'd have to, I could ask him, that could be a question I could ask him.
I think that might be a question that's worth at least discussing.
Yeah.
Obviously, a number of the question, the comments from the applicants have been in that direction. The applicant is obviously allowed to say no. They don't wanna do single-family. And then we will proceed reviewing the plan that we have now.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, if you were looking to take the temperature of the board, I would severely weigh what you just heard.
Oh, I wrote down the comments, so. Nope, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I make one more comment?
Sure. And if you could just say your name and address for the record again, just to make the minutes easier.
Yeah, Paul Wannamaker, 217 Town Avenue. It's just an observation. I've been, over the thirty-plus years that we've lived in Norton, I've been to a lot of these hearings. And usually, there's some people who want it, some people who don't. And there isn't a single individual in this room, and you folks have to be neutral, obviously, in meeting, and who want this? And if there are people who think this is a good idea, where are they? As I said, we moved over thirty years, when we came here, there wasn't a single traffic light in town. The biggest feature in town was the flea market. And if you've driven through the center of town lately, it's almost impossible to get through the center of town during certain times of the day. You have to even know some of the back roads, and hopefully, they aren't under construction. And do we really need, I, I remember when we went through this with, the idea was wanting to make 140 business, and the argument was, well, there'd be less traffic. No, there'd be more traffic. And we're just adding a double number of driveways and cars, and yeah, the, the, the road is a shortcut from the... So, it's already got a lot of traffic on it. And I, I, just an observation, where, if this is a good idea, other than to this gentleman, where are they? They're certainly not here in this room. And if there are people who really want it, I think they would have showed up and had something to say, so it's just my thoughts.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Given the timeline for the discussions and the reviews that we have here, as I think we've mentioned earlier, our next meetings are the 17th and the 31st of January. Brian, is the 17th starting to look busy?
Well, besides continuances, we don't have any.
So, if I want to...
Right, just discussion topics for the...
Okay, and the 31st, is that looking similar?
We just have the parallel arrangement.
Okay. Do you have a, understanding that, let's say, we're gonna have... I expect at least two of the next three projects are also gonna be continued to future meetings. Do you have a preference between the 17th and the 31st?
17th.
The 17th with your preference?
When would you need some, the additional information? Oh, early, Brian, too.
Our general preference is to try to get things a week in advance as much as possible. That is not always possible. But that obviously makes it easier for everybody to review and ask questions and not be playing catch-up like we sometimes are.
Okay.
So, do you have any further questions or comments? Otherwise, I'd potentially look for a motion to continue.
I want you to continue, S P 17381, 17382, 17383, and 17384.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue to January 17th. Is any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to continue? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to continue? You say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? We are continued. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody in the room, if you'd like to leave, you certainly can. If you'd like to say a comment on town hall later in the meeting, please feel free to say so.
If I could just ask a quick question, is that meeting on the seventeenth, is that open to residents?
It is a continuation of the public address.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for hearing this. Okay. As everybody filters out here, I would ask that you please, if you do have additional conversations, please try to have about a hallway or a second meeting. Next item on our agenda is Okay. Moving on to the next item on our agenda, which is definitive settlement plan one three nine three two and special permit one four seven zero four, zero one twenty-six, one twenty-eight, one fifty-four Pine Street and zero Blue Road. This has been continued a number of times. But we are happy to have the applicant back here to discuss the latest developments with the project. And we apologize for a peer reviewer who has been sitting here on hold for an hour and a half. We're going to get to Mr. Dirk here shortly.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Ward. For the record, my name is Black Forbes from Zima Consulting Engineers. Since the last meeting, I had mentioned at the last meeting, the last couple of meetings, the only thing that was, I was standing with the Conservation Commission was the culvert design under the roadway, the wetlands crossing. Since that last meeting, we met with Horstley and Witten at the site to review that culvert design. Came to the conclusion, an agreement with them, that the culvert analysis was correct, but we decided that it was a good idea to increase the size of the culvert anyway. The applicant was willing to do that. It was agreed to that it would be a four-foot by three-foot box cover with an open bottom, which is, that was primarily why they wanted us to do that box cover, so we could have the open bottom on it. And so, we have, and Claire Hoogboom, the environmental consultant, has met with the Conservation Commission since that last meeting and that's still, that's been continued to yet another Conservation Commission meeting. But that's essentially the last issue with them. We, I have mentioned several times that we're waiting to get to that point of what we're going to do with the cover before revise the plans, so we've got to that point. Included the box culvert on the new set of drawings that I submitted last week. And also, the other items that were revised on the plans were, again, that culvert. The reviewer, Horstley Witten, asked about the, the, an existing depression on the, on the site that we, and we decided to preserve that and the way it now collects water and infiltrates. We put, we put a drainage easement around that area with the intention that it will remain the same. It's current condition, so nobody can do anything with that, and we'll continue to do what we expected to do. They asked us to add borrowed construction fencing for visual aid at the erosion control line, and we've done that. And this was not something they specifically asked for, but you may recall, it was at least several months ago that we discussed with this board, the street lighting. And we added streetlights to the wetland crossing and the internal intersection. This intersection here. And I believe that's what they requested. So, one other thing I just, I wanted to go over, and I believe there may have been slight misunderstanding on the traffic last time. So, we were asked to do a traffic study, did it was, went through a review process with the towns consultant. And that town, the towns consultant has since approved that, the analysis that was done by Mr. Gillen, who's here tonight to answer any questions. But we just wanted to make it clear that we're not opposing traffic mitigation measures here. It's just that none are warranted from what was done, so that, that's all. We're not opposing anything that's makes sense, or suggested at this point. And if there's any questions on the traffic, Mr. Gillen is here. I can assist in answering anything, and I saw that the towns consultant was here. I'm not sure if he's still there.
No, I, I see him there. He's, he's come on camera, so he is here. Before we get to Mr. Dirk, I just wanted, you mentioned the lighting. I know we had also mentioned in the meeting that we wanted to specifically note that that lighting was to be maintained by the homeowners association.
Yes, that.
And that is in the
The notes are on the plan for that, yes. We metered, we individually metered, and the homeowners association will pay for that lighting.
Yeah, I think, Laurie, was it you who, there was a common light that people had been disputing who had to pay to replace it for decades or something along those lines?
I'm in a cluster subdivision, and yes, we have lights that haven't worked for eleven years.
Okay. Yeah, so I know that traffic was one of the big topics of discussion and has been, and been one of the topics of discussion in relation to this project pretty much for its, for the length of the, your time talking with us.
And we met with the neighbors prior to meeting, which, so that's, they may concern them, yeah.
So, Mr. Dirk, Dirk, I do see you here on camera, so I'll just ask if you could introduce yourself. Obviously, you're from Vanessen Associates, and I think myself and I think potentially other members of the board may have just questions in regards to the traffic study and your review of it.
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As was mentioned for the record, my name is Jeffrey Dirk. I'm a managing partner with Vanessen Associates. And we're the towns transportation consultant for this project, working through Horstley and Witten. Just by way of an overview for everyone at the meeting as well as on the Zoom meeting as well, we, serving as the towns review consultant, have reviewed the materials that the applicant submitted. That those materials included a transportation assessment, which I would mention has been revised several times in response to comments that we provided, as well as the, the site plans that are before you tonight as well. Our original comment letter was issued in July of this year, and there's been two subsequent comment letters. The first, as I mentioned, in July, which was a detailed review of the original submitted by the applicant, included several comments on the transportation analysis. Some of which expanded the study area, requested revisions to the trip generation calculation, so essentially how much traffic the project is expected to, to generate net new on the roadway network. Looking at impacts at intersections, impacts, we're looking at motor vehicle crashes at the intersections as they, as they operate today. And then how this project will impact a lot of what's been discussed tonight on other projects, which is the general flow of traffic in town, particularly along Pine Street, and looking at delays and vehicle queuing at intersections, both before and after the project's traffic has been added. We also performed a review of the site plans. The site plans, as, as were presented to you tonight, they incorporate all of the changes that we requested. The standpoint of the, the site plan aspect of the project is, we look at it with respect to circulation and accessibility. The plans are at a level where they've addressed all of our comments. The roadway widths are sufficient to accommodate two-way traffic, occasional on-street parking, although there is sufficient off-street parking for each of the units that on-street would only be required to the exception to a party or something. But the width of the roadway is sufficient to accommodate that and most key vehicle travel as well. And the applicant has demonstrated that through some terrain analyses that we've asked. So, in looking at that, in looking at the design of the roadway, the applicant's plans have addressed all of our comments. We did recommend, I believe it's at Lloyd Circle intersection with Pine Street. We asked that the applicant undertake a detailed review of site lines coming out of the project on the Pine Street to make sure that you can see if you're driving along Pine Street, if Pine Street, if someone pulls up and stalls in the middle of the road, can you see them at the access points of the property? But then also, if someone is exiting this development, looking to the left or right, Pine Street's heavily vegetated to make sure that there's clear site lines for those motorists as well, to be able to see from out of the project. And so, they demonstrated that through their plans, but we have suggested there are areas where vegetation clearing or trimming needs to take place along Pine Street. They've defined those areas on the plans. They are within either the town right of it or within the land that's under control of the applicant. So they are able to make those improvements that are necessary for the site lines to be acceptable with appropriate approvals from, from the town, so from the standpoint of the site plans, they have addressed all of our comments, and as I mentioned, they're well-designed from our standpoint and looking at access and circulation within the project site itself. Focusing on the off-site traffic impacts, as you might remember through some of the applicant's presentations as well as our reviews, the applicant did undertake a study of the Pine Street corridor originally, that they had looked at just the access points into the property, and they selected one intersection to the north at the Crane Street intersection. We asked them to add an intersection to the south at Crane Street. They did do that. There were also questions about the dates and times at which the traffic counts were performed. I think most importantly, that conditions as they relate to public schools being in session, but also being college, which we know has a significant impact on the flow of traffic along that roadway. The applicant did undertake some counseling. Leaving college was not open. So we had asked them to go back and undertake some additional traffic counts to either adjust the counts they had performed before, or just redo the traffic counts in their entirety. The last review that we had done, which was the subject of our October twenty-first letter, presents now this updated analysis and probably consistent with what the board indicated, as well as the residents that commented on the project, the traffic volumes that they were using were, you know, off by, underestimated the volumes or undercounted by about fifteen to sixteen percent. And then, of course, we need to account for the impacts of COVID. So at the end of the day, all of the traffic analyses, basically, where they started from to where they were based on our August review, they've upped our October review. They've updated their traffic counts, and any counts that were formed when schools were not in session were upgraded or updated by about twenty-four percent increase in traffic. So, you know, in, in terms of looking at the mechanics of the traffic, they were comparable to what they presented. The impact of the project, it's expected to produce somewhere between thirty-five and forty-six peak hour trips. Now, that's total volume coming out of the project by way of the two driveways. Once that traffic gets out to Pine, Pine Street, I'm sorry, some of it's going north, the majority, about sixty percent. The balance, about forty percent is going to the south, so the bulk of that traffic is heading towards one twenty-three and up towards meeting college. So we're starting with thirty-five to forty-five, let's say, peak hour trips, sixty percent going north, forty percent going to south. The point I'm making is that as you get away from the site, these numbers start to get smaller and smaller. Doesn't mean that there aren't existing impacts or existing conditions related to congestion, especially near meeting college. But what we're looking at is the incremental increase as a results, as a result of the project. So getting away from the project site, I know there's been some questions about, you know, should we expand up and do analysis of an intersection with one twenty-three? As we're looking at the study area and determining where impacts are most likely going to show up as it relates to the project, the general rule of thumb, in fact, MAST D O T guidance is, you should be studying any intersection where the project or any project would add a hundred or more peak hour trips or increase traffic volumes by more than five percent. Again, that's just a rule of thumb. So in looking at those parameters, and again, speaking about the distribution or dispersal of traffic as it gets away from the driveways and focusing on the area to the north of the site, the project's going to add less than thirty vehicle trips over the course of an hour. So that's one additional vehicle every two minutes. And so our opinion is not to suggest that, to the extent that the board was inclined to ask for additional analysis of intersections quarter one, one twenty-three. What we would say from a professional standpoint, looking at that level of impact, is it, it's not going to demonstrate an impact as a result of the project because, again, we're looking at one additional vehicle every two minutes during the, during the peak hour as we're looking at those intersections. So two minutes is actually a long time period in terms of additional project traffic. And so, you know, again, it's not to say that there aren't existing congestion problems, because we know that there are. But really measuring the impact of the project, it's not going to show any significant impact in terms of increases in delays of vehicle queuing at those intersections. So I, I just offer that by way of framing kind of our review and why we've framed a study area as we have as it relates to the project. So lastly, in terms of what's going to describe as mitigation, and I know the applicant has represented that they're not adverse to a suggestion of mitigation and the discussion of that item. We have indicated as a part of our review, although that the project has not been showing it having demonstrated impact significantly on motorists delays or vehicle queuing, there, there, you know, are areas along Pine, Pine Street that are in need of improvement. And, and we're not talking about road widening or things like that, but as a part of the applicant's analysis, what they have demonstrated is that we do not have high crash locations in this area, so none of the intersections along Pine, Pine Street exceed state-designated crash criteria that we indicated. They're high crash locations. A MAST D O T provides mapping that would indicate where there are locations where we have a significant number of crashes that are disproportionate to the volume of traffic either on a roadway or traveling through an intersection. We don't have any of those conditions here. However, as a part of the applicant's crash analysis, what they have shown is that there are a large number of a number, let's say, of single-vehicle crashes all along Pine Street where we have a vehicle striking a roadside object. So they're giving waves or mailboxes or something like that along the section of roadway. We have suggested that it would be appropriate for potentially looking at enhancements through signs, pavement markings, other such warning devices, you know, along a defined segment of Pine Street where those type of devices would be shown to be beneficial at addressing the crash history that exists along the roadway. And I think that, you know, to the extent that the board is inclined to want a level of improvement that, along those lines, given the impact of the project. You know, that's something we can help the board and the, the new town planner with, with coming up with some conditions to have a discussion with the applicant about improvements along those lines, so. I probably spoke too long, but I'd be, yeah, I guess I'll turn it back to the board. Did I get any sort of questions?
Thank you very much, Mr. Dirk. I think that I won't, I'll, don't think Maria would turn down any offer of assistance in that regard.
Yeah, I would love assistance.
Thank you for answering the question about the intersection at one twenty-three. That was going to be one of my comments or questions in relation to your analysis of the project. I think the overriding comment, I think that because traffic has been such a significant point of discussion for this project, I think people got into the weeds a lot in terms of the methodology of the traffic study being done by Mr. Gillen. In terms of the mix of machine counts, hand counts, where they were done, where they were placed. Are you capturing all the traffic? Are you only capturing part of the traffic? But in your review of all of those methodologies in terms of all of those items, is it, this is a, a traffic study that was done according to professional standards, in your opinion?
It, it was, and, you know, I, I would just mention to the, you know, as I, as I mentioned, we, we've undertaken three reviews, so I think the difficulty here in your, in this project is you could, you basically have three traffic studies that will appear, rather than a single document and maybe a comment and then a response. So it is, I, it's very difficult to follow anything other than, you know, if, for me, I can follow it. And what I would say is that, you know, And what I would say is that, you know, it contains three different, three sets of, three sets of traffic counts conducted on different months at different locations at different intersections, then adjustments are applied. It's confusing, I mean frankly. And, you know, I'm able to get into the weeds, as you said, on that, look at it. And what I would say is that as we're looking at the traffic counts, even performed at different times of the year at different intersections along the corridor, one of the critical things that I'm looking at, you had mentioned, in terms of, do we capture anything? You know, first is looking at when were the counts done and what were the conditions with schools in session, was leading college in session, making sure that we've got a good baseline to be able to look at. So that we're looking at a condition where school, public schools are in session, leading colleges is in session as a starting point. Then what I'm looking at as we look at that mix, as you said, of machine counts and physical turning room accounts at intersections, I'm looking to see if there's any disagreement in the traffic counts because Pine Street, really, it's a residential roadway. And so there's no large traffic generator along that corridor that should result in a significant imbalance of traffic at any measuring point around that roadway. I expect there to be variations of 10 vehicles, let's say, just by virtue of the single vehicle homes and, you know, just of some anomalies that they have in the machine as the way it collects data. A variation of about 10 vehicles, typical, not something that I would be concerned about. As a part of our review, we did see major differences. In fact, I think as a part of our review early on, he had said, you know, as I looked at traffic counts from the machine recorder or 24 hours and I looked at a peak hour turning in that kind of intersection, there was a very large imbalance. And that imbalance had to do with the fact that one of the counters were forming in schools in session, the other was not. And so we made them go back and adjust all of those numbers so that now the imbalances between intersections are no more than around 10 vehicles, which is exactly where we expect on a residential roadway. So, you know, our goal as an peer reviewer is to do those checks and balances. And I do not envy anyone that tries to piece all of these documents together because it's almost a, you know, a task that you won't be able to perform.
Okay, so thank you. I appreciate the fact that you're giving us some grading on a curve in terms of looking at all of the documentation. But understand that your evaluation of the traffic report and why you feel that the review of 123 is not necessarily warranted based on volumes. I'm going to turn to other members of the board here, see if there are any other specific questions as they relate to traffic that they'd like to ask, because I know I'm only one brain up here. Sometimes half of ones, so.
No comment.
On the traffic study or on me having half a mind?
No, I got a comment.
Okay.
Whether we want to get into it now, could we get into it, Mr. Dirk, a little bit more, more what you would recommend for what we could do to do some improvements along Pine? Whether it be like electronic signage or markings or just regular signage? What would you, I'm not saying draw us a picture right now, just briefly, expand a little bit more than what you've already said?
No, I think it's a combination of signs and paper markings along the roadway. I think importantly, as we look at kind of the raw up the road crashes and striking roadside objects, and clearly, you know, you know, I heard you mentioned about, you know, streetlights and lights not being punctual. You know, a lot of this has to do with visibility along the roadway. It has to do as well with weather conditions along the roadway. So I think what we want to look at is, you know, a combination of signs and markings along the roadway at appropriate locations. So at such as at curbs, to better find the edge of the travelway, provide motorists with some guidance in terms of, you know, advisory speeds along sections of the roadway versus the posted speed. So the posted or regulated speed is what the police department can mandate speeds or choose tickets for speeding along the roadway. Advisory speeds are just to let motorists know that, you know, there's something, the layers of the geometry of the roadway that they should slow down or lose care when they're going along the roadway. But things along those lines, I think, are extremely helpful. It's not always much strapping a center line down the roadway, but it's more about defining the edge of the travelway space, especially where you have trees or other objects that might be close to the roadway itself. There may be other instances where, you know, we do recommend removal or such of roadside objects, particularly if there are trees in close proximity to the roadway. But it's target improvements like that that we would suggest that maybe the applicant undertake along Pine Street.
And to follow up in that, if using the driveway as the center, how far would we be going on either side? I mean, we wouldn't want to be going too crazy, obviously, making them go miles and miles and miles, or would we, or what would be the scope of that?
No, you know, I would think as I'm looking at, you know, kind of the alignment of Pine Street, you've basically, you've got a curve, you've got two curves, I believe, on either side of kind of the segment where the road is located and maybe the targeted area, certainly includes the driveways or the area in proximity to the project site. And maybe, you know, we take it up to the next curve on either side of the project site. Because that'll, you know, that gets us to a point where we've dealt with the curvature of the roadway, where we may want to advise or speeds the slow or to define the edge of the travelway. And then we continue some, you know, targeted improvements as you get closer to the project site, and then going on the other side so if you're heading towards the south as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, we have Mr. Dirk here. Any additional comments that we have in relation to the traffic study? Okay. Well, thank you for your comments and your expertise. I'm not sure if we're going to circle back to you here in a second. So I'm going to ask, if you want to come up to the podium here and just, obviously, we've talked about mitigation here a little bit. Is that in line with kind of what your comment was at the outset of the meeting in terms of?
Exactly. I think it's exactly what I was getting to. Thank you, Mr. Dirk, Dirk, for all of your comments. And I don't think we'd be opposed to any of those suggested. When nothing was warranted specifically from the traffic study, we appreciate the town, the board, the town, the towns consultants coming back to us with suggestion on what will be possible mitigation measures. And I don't believe the applicant has any problem with any of those types of things. So I think that makes, I think it makes a lot of sense. Jack, does that make?
It does, it makes a lot of sense.
In terms of blocking and tackling, in terms of how that is documented, implemented, what would be the way we actually execute that?
That's an excellent question, one that would probably be up to how the, if the project is eventually approved, conditions of approval.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't know what the situation is with Mr. Dirk working with your new planner, but if I could just ask, if we could review those when something was, when you compose something? We could take a peek at them and then we'll get Mr. Endronis to sign off on it. And then I guess it could be a condition of approval. That's up to the planning board, really.
How we do this and what we're requesting. And obviously, we're not going to, we're asking you to make a stop sign plated in 24-karat gold or anything like that. But obviously, everything has a cost.
Oh, yeah, exactly. That's why I'm asking just to press to take a peek at it.
Exactly. Yeah, just to, whether that's something that the planner and that's for able to work through, whether it involves highway department, I'm not sure.
Mr. Chairman, I would offer as well, I mean, it could be something, you know, working with the town planner, whether the town would, sometimes the highway department would suggest that they would rather receive money and undertake it with their own town forces. And sometimes they would rather have the applicant do it. So it could be something that depending on how the highway department would like to approach it, we can, you know, work, I can work with the town planner to structure a condition, either a dollar amount or, you know, specific improvements to be implemented by the applicant.
Okay. So that would be homework for us to discuss with the highway department, how they might like to proceed. And then we will have additional correspondence following up on that respect. And the culvert was your last year meeting item with conservation and with the plans themselves. We had the revised plans. Is there anything that you're looking for additional guidance from us at this moment?
Well, the only thing I have not seen, we responded to Horstley and Witten's comments. I haven't seen anything back from them. So that would kind of be the only thing that I would wait to see. There may be something that with what we did that they may have issue with. I don't suspect that that will be. It was pretty simple stuff, but that's what I would expect to see.
So you're still waiting for the final comments closed letter from Horstley and Witten?
Exactly.
Okay. And any members of the board have any additional questions based on what we discussed this evening? Or obviously, we ran through all of the conditions at our last session?
We do have a few open areas, but I did have one question. I haven't had a chance to watch the last Conservation Commission meeting. I understand the site plan visit was done. What is your current understanding of their decision on approving this as a limited project under ACEC?
Just so you know, I only attended one Conservation Commission hearing. It's been all handled by Claire. So my understanding through her is that they believe that they have, and I shouldn't speak for them. My understanding.
They being Conservation, sorry.
It's their decision. I think what it's come down to is however, whichever way they go with it, that's, they can legally do it and it meets all of the regulations for them to do that.
You don't have any idea in terms of when that vote is expected to happen?
Claire is making a final submittal to them. And spoke with her today. And that's going to be going in shortly. And then I believe, I don't know when the next Conservation Commission meeting is. I believe it's sometime beginning mid-January. And she hopes that she'll have something from Horstley and Witten on her. Now, having said that about being in the Conservation, the Conserva, as you may recall, I've mentioned many times, the original conceptual plans that we had had no wetlands crossing. We were asked by the Conservation Commission to make the crossing. So I don't know. To me, that would lead me to believe that they, I'm hoping they were looking for a legal and justified method by which to approve that limited project because they asked us to do it. So that would be.
That's it. Thank you.
Obviously, without that determination, nothing happens with this, with that whole right side of the road.
Exactly, exactly right.
There were a couple of things that we had marked at the last meeting to discuss with Zenith at this meeting.
I apologize, my laptop is dead.
That's okay. So one of them is within the Cluster Development Planning Board shall approve the open space maintenance plan. We had a decision regarding the ownership of the open space plan may require changes. Based on their decision.
But the decision was that the town would want that owned by the homeowners association and they'll take it to the homeowners association. And we had confirmation from town manager on that.
And then there was a question that we wanted to.
I know the other one that was on my list was Cape Cod Berms.
Yes.
And Highway said they were okay with it.
Right.
I had two things to do.
Peer review notes, the applicant has added stop signs and street signs to the planned set, notes added to the cover sheet referencing Article 8. Planning Board did confirm that this is the only planned signage. And to check with Zenith, then that refers to number 43. Oh, I think that had to do with the rail trail.
Ah, yes.
And the signage.
Okay. So the signage within the site is the stop sign to get to that move place?
Yeah, yeah, there's a, there's, what we were asked to add was stop lines, stop signs, street signs down here, and then the other cul-de-sac where that's where we're at.
Yeah. And I know Venice looked at the circulation of the site and that was included in their review.
Exactly.
The question in regards to signage relates to, I'm not sure if you have a sheet that shows the very back of the site as it abuts the rail trail?
We have, you're referring to where we had proposed the parking spaces?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe it's on a detail. If you give me a second, I can open up to it.
Yeah, I can give you the context while you get there. There was a question from one of the members, members or somebody connected to the Alternative Transportation Committee, I can't remember which one, relating to some kind of signage or something at that lot. Basically stating it's subway shape or form. Park here only for the rail trail. Don't block everybody else's houses.
Don't block driveways on Brick Street.
Yeah, if we could get some, whatever the appropriate entity is who would request the actual wording on the sign. I don't believe we'd have any problem with that. Maybe it's the rail trail people.
That was my assumption as well. I was not going to get into sign colors and fonts at that moment in time.
We have a change in the makeup of the board as well. The chair is now different. So the person to whom I directed you is no longer on the Alternative Transportation Commission, but I can get you the name of the and the email address of the new person.
Okay, that'd be great.
Yeah, so it's.
So this is our little detail showing that's the Brick Street and a little gravel parking area there. So if they can just, if they would just suggest wording and where they'd like to sign places, we have to put that in place.
Okay. Laura, I know you're trying not to overstress your voice. Was that the only conditions that we had to review with Zenith this evening?
Let me just double check real quick.
Okay.
I think we're okay, but Cape Cod Berms are okay?
After you left our previous meeting, we spent, I think, probably an hour running through all of the items we noted for conditions. So we saved you all of those discussions at the prior meeting.
Great, thank you very much.
I think we're good.
So I'm going to turn around again. I haven't done this in a little bit. And I'll see if anybody who's here attending the meeting would like to speak in terms of this project, or if there's anybody attending via the Zoom call that would like to speak up. I know we did have a couple of butters submit additional letters and documentation since our last session. If any of them are watching, we have, we do have them. We have reviewed them. I do see one hand raised. Bob, I'll ask you if you can come off mute and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, this is Bob, up on 133 Pine Street. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. So, yeah, I sent you an email this morning. So driving home from the gym this morning, and 8:30 this morning, there was a three-car accident at the Pine Street Group 123 intersection. And so, yeah, I'm a little bit surprised that that intersection wasn't looked at. I know, I heard the reasoning, but it's a bad intersection. So any, you know, time you have a bad intersection, any kind of. you have a bad intersection, any kind of increase in traffic, it has a negative impact. I think one of the problems at that intersection is like it changes from 30 to 40 miles an hour just prior to that intersection, right in front of Wheaton College. There's some crosswalks there as well, and so, you know, people see that 40 mile an hour sign, then they start accelerating, and they're accelerating going into that intersection with Pine Street, you know, people on Pine Street trying to either get onto Route 123 or go across onto Helm Street. So it's just a bad intersection, so I don't really agree with that intersection not being looked at in the study. So that was one thing. Another thing with the study, you know, the speed study, there were seven vehicles in the speed study. It just doesn't seem like, you know, like inadequate sample size, you know, to get speeds, average speeds on Pine Street. You know, I drive this street, you know, every day, and the speeds that were reported seemed awfully low to me, from what I've seen, especially when Wheaton is in session, speeds tend to go up a bit, I get more college kids coming racing down the road. In any case, I don't think seven vehicles, I'm not sure why the speeds were so slow, if it was done like at a curve, or if, you know, the person had the radar gone out and they're just causing people to slam on their brakes. So that was a concern to me. And then there was one other concern that I think a board member there brought up one of the prior meetings, was that the mechanical counter was placed at 154 Pine Street, and it's just that one mechanical counter, and so that wouldn't count for people, you know, traveling on Pine Street on either end that are not crossing that 154 Pine Street.
Thank you, Mr. Butler.
Yeah, real quick, so that's my comments on the traffic study. I have one comment on the last Conservation Commission meeting. I actually brought up, through listening to another proposed projects on East Hodges Street, one of the butters brought up, you know, that there could be possibly be a bond set up for stormwater issues that might occur in the future. So I wanted to bring that up in this meeting. I brought it up with Mr. Thomas.
Okay, thank you. Just to speak to some of your notes, I will do my best not to butcher Mr. Dirk's analysis here, but I think that there were, there were issues with some of the initial traffic studies, which is why there were additional studies and data put into place, which filled out the overall set of data. And in relation to the number of.
I don't think, excuse me, I don't think anything changed that I'm talking about since the last study was done. So I think as for, for example, that, you know, vehicle speeds, there were seven vehicles in that study, but I just want to bring that up.
Sure. And in terms of counts, I know that one of the things that was noted by one of the traffic engineers was in terms of turns and speeds, was in terms of measuring, I'm going to completely forget the term here, but unobstructed movements within the roadway, so if somebody's blocking you, then you kind of have to throw that one out the window and not count it in some manner. But in terms of, is that an accurate assessment of why getting into some of those data points may seem a little bit out of the ordinary for residents, Mr. Dirk?
No, I think, actually, I think it was a very good summary of kind of the information that was presented. I think what I can add to it is maybe just a little bit more color in terms of the methodology. I don't necessarily disagree with the respect of the speed mechanisms. Now, they're reporting what we call is a prevailing travel speed, so the 85% outspeed, which is the speed which 85% of vehicles travel at or below where they measured the speeds, and that was, I believe, 34, 34 miles an hour was the highest. You know, I did not find that to be, you know, not atypical of what I would expect along this section of roadway, but however, we made sure that the sightlines that are provided would be sufficient for in excess of 35 miles an hour. The statutory speed, I think, in this area is 30, and so, you know, they're providing sightlines for 35 or 40, 40 miles an hour, which I believe they can achieve at either intersection. That's more than sufficient for, you know, what would be reasonable for someone to be driving along that roadway, 10 miles an hour over the posted speed limit is excessive. And if they can provide sightlines for that, that would create a safer, safe intersection, and that's, that's what they're aiming to achieve. In terms of the location of the measurement site, as I mentioned, they're conducting counts basically Plain Street to the north, KC to the south, and then they did the machine count. They, in the vicinity of the project site, that's typically what we would do, because we are trying to ideally get speed and volume where the access points of the property are going to be. There will be gains and losses between intersections and between where they've gotten measurements, but again, what our goal is is to really make sure that those gains and losses are not to the extent where it's would be disproportionate to the amount of traffic that we think could be added or subtracted between the data points, and that's one of the things that we evaluated as a part of our.
Thank you, Mr. Dirk. I believe the next person who would raise their virtual hand is Casey Lauren, or at least that's the name that's appearing on Zoom. I know some people have different names pop up, so if you would like to unmute and state your name and address for the record, please, we'd love to hear your comments.
Yes, this is Casey Lauren, 141 Pine Street. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay. Yeah, just to kind of add on to Bob's comments there, I also disagree with what's being stated about the intersection of 123 and Pine Street. Just, I guess a quick question for everybody there on the board and who's doing the traffic studies and stuff. Do any of you live on Pine Street and/or travel this street often?
I mean, I'll say that I travel it occasionally. I wouldn't say, I certainly don't live on Pine Street. I don't think anybody is disputing the fact that the intersection of 123 and Pine Street has congestion. I think what was stated in the opinion of the traffic engineer who's being paid by the town, who's not being paid by the applicant, is that the increase of traffic at 123 and Pine Street, or the amount of traffic generated from this project to that intersection, wouldn't be something that would make a measurable impact on the congestion that is there now. Obviously, any, any addition to a problem is an additional aggravation, but from an engineering standpoint, that's their opinion.
I, I guess I understand that and follow that, what they were saying, but as a, as a resident who is on that street, you know, daily, multiple times a day, when it's peak hours, there's very often eight, 10-plus cars getting backed up currently with the number of houses that are already on the street, and this project is almost going to double the number of houses on the street. So I don't think it takes an engineer to figure out that the number of additional traffic backups or cars being backed up is going to increase, maybe not quite double, but it's going to be substantial. I don't, I don't think it's very hard to figure that out. I mean, if you double the number of houses on the street, and you double the number of cars that are driving up and down the street, you know, plus, you know, with that many additional houses, you've got double the number of deliveries going on, whether it's oil deliveries or UPS, FedEx, whatever it is, Amazon, you know, it just, if you double the number of houses on the street, you're essentially going to double most of the traffic on the street as well. I don't think, I don't think there is a large majority of the traffic on Pine Street that is just through traffic. Most of it is caused by the residents, from what I've seen. So I guess I would like to see that intersection evaluated. I know, I guess, what they're seeing at the site and at the intersections of Crane and Plain Street, they're not concerned, but I don't think many of us residents have ever been concerned about those two intersections. From the beginning, the majority of us have been concerned about 123 and Pine, because that's where there's already a significant problem, and I don't see how adding 44 houses is not going to cause a, a pretty significant increase to that problem that's already existing.
Yeah, no, I don't think that anybody on the board is looking at this project and going, the intersection of 123 and Pine Street is going to be fine, and everything's going to magically flow smoothly. I think that we understand that we're adding volume to that street.
Okay, yeah, I guess that, that was really all I wanted to say tonight, I just, I, I guess I just don't quite understand how everybody, or I shouldn't say everybody, how the people who do the traffic studies are so nonchalant about what's going on at that intersection, and that's, that's the reason why I bring up, like, myself and the other residents that are voicing this concern, we experience it every day, multiple times a day, and everybody else that's involved doesn't. So I wish, or I hope that our concerns here are heard and at least looked into, is all, because everything that's been said so far was just, 123 and Pine isn't a concern of ours, so we're not going to look into it. Well, I truly think it should be looked into, because it is the biggest problem for traffic for all of us residents in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lauren. I have one additional person of the Zoom meeting who wanted to speak. The name that's appearing is Sharon Donovan. If you'd like to state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Sharon Donovan, 79 Pine Street.
Thank you.
I just wanted to reiterate the comment by Casey about doubling the amount of homes. We currently, I believe, have 39 homes from Crane Street down to Crane Street, and you're going to add 44 homes. I would imagine most of these single-family homes will have at least two people driving, possibly kids driving, so it's just going to add, I would say, more than 25 cars to the amount of traffic on our street. Sightlines, I know where we live, we're right at the beginning of Pine Street and Plain, and the amount of cars that go by at very high speeds, because it's a straightaway, it's very dangerous, a lot of our driveway. There was another comment about crashes happening on the street, that it's single cars hitting trees and objects on roads, but what's going to happen when that's a pedestrian? Because it's not safe on the street to walk with the amount of cars that they're going to be adding. And any increase to the intersection that's already a bad intersection is just going to make it worse. So 1.3 is already a bad intersection, my son's had an accident there, and I've seen several accidents, so. And also wanted to add, the amount of school buses, trash trucks that are going to be going down that street, into that new development, it's just going to add more cars and trucks on our street, it's just going to be very, very dangerous.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Donovan. Mr. Dirk, just to confirm, I know you stated the mass DOT guidelines for intersections and when they should be added to a review. Can you just restate those again, just to, I think you had said addition of 100 cars, and then there was a percentage?
Yeah, and again, these are just the guidelines. Generally, when we're looking at a traffic study for a project such as this, you look at one, the major intersection on either side of the site, so we ensure that they've done that, and then you would look at any other intersections where the project either adds 100 or more vehicle trips during the, during the peak hour, which clearly this project doesn't generate that amount of traffic. Or there's an increase in traffic of 5% or more at that intersection. So as you're looking at total volume of traffic going through the 123 intersection, you add up the volume of traffic on all of the approaches, because it's total volume of traffic at the intersection. And if the project adds, you know, 20 to 25 vehicles to that intersection, it's not likely to exceed 5% during both of the time periods that we're talking about. So that's where, we necessarily fall into a criteria where it would show, and they want to be clear, it's significant impact on operations at that intersection. It's not to say, as I said, that there's not, you know, existing conditions there that have backups or delays, and clearly there are. The question is, what is the incremental increase of this project? And those criteria are where we would suggest that if you exceed those, you would have more than the incremental increase. So your incremental increase would be at a level that would be considered significant, and therefore, analysis would be appropriate. One of the things I'd mention, just in terms of residential project, is that traffic is dispersed. The residents are correct, you're doubling the number of homes, you know, that's true in terms of housing, but it doesn't translate into doubling the amount of traffic on the roadway, especially during the peak hours, because not everyone leaves at the same time, and I think that that's, as we were talking about dispersal, if the project generates the 46 vehicle trips an evening, let's say, that doesn't all arrive or depart at the same time. It's dispersed over the one-hour time period, and so it's not to say that if you arrive at the intersection of 123 in the morning, and as one of the residents testified, there's, you know, eight vehicles in queue, there's not to say that as a result of the project, that there won't be nine vehicles, you know, during some of those time periods, but there won't be 16, I think is the point. And so I think that's really what we're talking about, and so, yes, there may be an additional vehicle in queue, but the queue is not going to double because of the dispersal of traffic at that intersection.
Okay. Thank you again for your comments there. Does anybody else, obviously, we do have an arm of other people here, anybody would like to speak? And I'll ramble for a bit to see if anybody else who's in the Zoom meeting would like to make additional comments. And while I do that, do any members of the board have any additional comments or questions that they have? Otherwise, I know the applicant mentioned they're still waiting for final correspondence from Horstley and Woodin, and hopefully, final correspondence as it relates to conservation. So, not seeing any additional hands coming up here if you wanted to comment. In terms of timing, as I think I've mentioned a few times today, our next meetings are the 17th and the 31st of January of next year. Obviously, I think we've continued at least two things to the 17th already. In terms of when you feel you will have what you need, would you like to have a second half slot on the 17th or a first half slot on the 31st?
Second half slot on the 17th, I think. I would, I can't speak with Horstley and Woodin, but they've been very, very prompt with their reviews, and I almost just expected it to be here before this meeting, so if it's okay with the board, we prefer the 17th.
Do you have any objections to that? Okay.
A motion to continue. Motion to continue DEF 13932 and SP 14704 to January 17.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to the 17th? Okay. All in favor of the motion to continue? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Okay, we are continuing until 17.
Thank you very much. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, everybody.
Okay. We're almost there, we have two more items. Next item on our agenda is a site plan review and special permit. Site plan review is. This is Zero South Washington Street, and the application for a parking lot containing 155 parking spaces.
That was the engineer. That was the engineer.
Oh, okay. So the engineer will be joining us here in person shortly. Just a quick check of the board, is everybody doing good? Does anybody need a short break? We are all humans, we do have bodily functions, so if we need to take a break, just say so. Okay. I believe I've given everybody a chance to raise their hand and get, and speak if they needed to here, but if you want to, just go ahead and introduce yourself.
My name's Bob Kroll, Kroll Engineering, and I'm the engineer on the project. And Dave Tor, sitting back there. And that's, this is the project. All right, the project is located opposite Lopez Drive. It's 8.3 acres.
It's within North Combs Center.
Okay, so this is the entire site here. And the wetlands were located by Goddard Associates. And we have a conservation hearing that they grabbed after the New Year, and we're going for them. So this is the existing conditions plan, shows the wetlands. Let's see, the, okay, so a lot of the area is 361,000, 881 square feet, plus and minus. Is 605 meter frontage, so there's plenty of frontage. And what we're proposing on this plan, it's, we make, the max gross coverage is 14%. And the parking area is 50,261 square feet. And let's see, the upland area is 147,000, or 41, almost 41% of the lot. This is, this is a wetland, this is the 25-foot no-touch, so we're away from that. Like we said, we have 155 spaces. Last Wednesday, last Friday, I opened up my email, and they would like to have a couple larger spaces. And I actually have, I've actually extended this out seven feet along that edge, and the drainage.
That an extra seven feet didn't mess with your drainage numbers at all?
It's not going to mess with it, so we can accommodate that, but basically, it's going to look like this. We might, we're going to bump this out. The grading will not affect, will not get into the 25-foot no-touch. And we've already run the numbers, we know it's going to work, but, so, this isn't the final, but we, this is what, it's the same number. Amazon is going to be, that's his client, and the 90, the 9-foot by 20-foot spaces work for most of their small vans, but now they have some bigger vans. And so, so we're going to put the 27-foot spaces along that area there. So this is, this is the 100-foot, what the line will be dealing without the conservation. It's pretty straightforward. The drainage system that we have, we're using pipe and stone. And so everything, everything that we have is going to infiltrate in there, and we're not going to be, nothing's going to be going into the wetlands, so it's pretty clean. We'll be using catch basins to storm sceptor, and so it's going to keep everything nice and clean.
Do you want to ask questions now, or do you want to?
That's, that's fine, it's a pretty simple project.
As I say, I have three general questions. One, is there any maintenance of vehicles that takes place on the site, and is there a structure needed to do so? No. The other questions are, I guess, related. Obviously, there's 155 spaces, that means there's 155-ish trucks that are not connected to a warehouse. So where are they getting all of the, do they have a home-based property?
Dave can talk to that. The way it's going to work, they're going to store their vehicles here. The drivers are going to come in, they're going to park their vehicle, back their van out, put their vehicle in, and drive out, and go load up. Dave want to speak to that, or?
No, that's pretty much it. The warehouse is right around the backside on the main road, the part of the, I think it's down Hill Street, down to Hill Street, over that neighborhood, in the industrial park.
In my understanding?
Yeah.
Okay. So that means that trucks, well, let's see, so trucks leaving the site would be taking a right, going up the street this direction and into the industrial park, they would not be going into the residential area to the left. Now, would you be open to signage to that effect?
We can, yeah.
Not that trucks are, not that drivers are necessarily going to want to go, well, maybe they don't want to go to work, but that's the hardest term. But signage to that effect, truck traffic, turn right to?
We can do that.
Okay.
One other thing, conservation, they sent the plans up to Amory Associates, they just had a thing about the mounting, and we've already figured that out. And this was good, this one we had to tweak a little bit, and so, so we should be all set with that.
As it relates to storm warning, you mean?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And does the special permit relief is just related to the amount of impervious area or the parking spaces?
I think anything open, I think, I believe it's 25 spaces you have to go for special permit.
Any members of the board have any additional questions as it relates to this project? Obviously, they're still in motion if that's a motion.
Can you talk about the, what are the hours that are expected? What are the hours of operation on site? Is this 24 hours cars and trucks coming and going?
No, just during the daylight, is this hours.
Okay. How about security on site?
It's surrounded by woods. I may put a gate if needed, on the front, with a passcode. But I suppose it depends on if anybody decides that that's needed for any particular purpose. I would like to see it only myself, just for the peace of mind. And today, with all the, you know, the technology, I know you can, you can have everybody have the same pass, so you know that they're all the same customers or individual, or however we want it. But if it's necessary, I'm certainly open to it. And whatever it takes to make it, to keep it safe, I know we've never had any problems over there, but if that's.
Can we talk a little bit also about the lighting with the acknowledgement that across the street is residential?
That was one of the things that Amazon basically want lighting in there, so we will be putting some, Dave, is that temporary lighting or?
Yeah, temporary lighting, probably motion-activated.
Lighting?
Yeah. So it's not on all the time.
And is there screening proposed at the front of the permit? Or is there screening existing?
When we do the work, we'll have to do so. We'll just, and planting's along here, so we can hide some of the, from the things across the street. But actually, Lopez Drive is right there, and there are, I believe there are some residences, there's a residence there. There's a couple of residences across there.
But we don't have any kind of planting shown on the plan at this point?
Not at this point, no. I can get that done.
Where is snow removal storage going to be?
The snow we had planned on, well, it's going to be probably like your podcast is doing, because it's going to be, let me go back here.
I mean, if we're doing it at the back end there, you're going into that wetland buffer more, so.
Well, I don't know if they're going to be using all these spaces, but there's going to be vehicles there at all times, whether it's a car or a van. So when they come, we left this spot open here, so we can, we can drive down this way and dump it on this end here. And I left this open, this space right here, for that reason. Because if they were to fill all of these spaces, you can't, there's no way to go. So this would be the exit over here on the end.
I will caveat this with, I'm not an engineer, but the volume of that space, which is the volume of the parking lot that we.
No, 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 it wouldn't be, it wouldn't just be that spot, but they could, sorry Snow could be pushed all over the, over the bed here, and it could be a spot there. And I don't know how many, go ahead.
There's more area than really that I have used for the storage, and it was always my intention to push the snow down at the back, down at the bottom there, where it will melt, and go to the catch basins, and right into the drainage system, right into the, right underneath, you know, into the infiltration system. So that's, that's.
So the, okay.
There's plenty of room for that.
So the infiltration area that's that, all of those lines that are circling the property, especially at the bottom where there's a number of rows of them, that would be essentially the snow.
This, this is, these are the conduits here, this is, this is all infiltration. And like I said, I'm leaving this area, if they want to dump the snow, Bobcat can walk it down, down to this area.
Or we can leave right on the, on the bottom, even of that asphalt pool, and go right into the catch basins, into the, into the drainage, as it melts.
And, you know, another area, well, this parking, this parking up there.
If we're going to update the plans, if we could just denote the snow removal areas specifically, that may be helpful in terms of clarifying that. Not that, not that what you're proposing, because it doesn't make sense, but just to have it documented on the plan.
How about fire? Have the fire department approved this plan?
We haven't gone all, but I think.
Because I don't see any way of getting the fire truck down and around, especially if it's fully occupied.
When, when we first started this, we needed 100 spaces initially, but we kind of tried to max it out, put as many as we could fit in here without getting into the wetlands or anything, so.
I mean, it doesn't matter if they use all the spaces or not, there still has to be a way for them to get around.
No, I understand, yeah. That's what I'm saying.
So they're going to have to sign off. The other thing pairing with that is they're going to be, Amazon's going more and more to electric vehicles, electric trucks, electric vans. Are they going to require charging stations?
Don't talk to that.
They haven't, they haven't said.
Don't talk to that at this point.
Almost all their facilities have, that's why, all of their facilities have.
No, but they haven't asked, they haven't said they required that for this yet.
Which also leads into the fire problem. You have electric vehicles, there's more instances of electrical fires, so.
But I don't, I don't see that, I don't see that coming down the road.
They're already doing them all, is why I'm saying it.
Yeah, yeah.
Brian, is this routed, permitted to the fire department?
It will.
Okay. And did they sign off, or, okay, if we could just?
We can pay the visit.
Yeah. Our permit system has a, they will give a check mark in the system if they've signed off, so either it's a nudge, or they can connect with you for making sure that the turning radiuses makes sense and everything, and they're good with it.
Can I answer a question?
Yeah.
Could we require, for the second one, would we require both a landscaping plan and a lighting plan? Could we have those in the next update?
Yes.
Especially because it's a butters.
The landscaping, I mentioned, the lighting, when I had to mention specifically, thank you.
And we have a lighting bylaw as well, do you want? It's not only that, although it's under site plan review, there's also a lighting bylaw, like so.
All right.
I think I'd also like to condition the hours of operation.
We can ask, that is a question of the applicant, whether they would accept them or not. Otherwise, we would have to, we would have to review it as a 24-hour facility.
I know from experience, they're generally back in by late, it's like 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night, they do go in that late.
Especially this time of year.
Correct. And usually, they're, they're out in waves, or they load up in waves, you'll have like at 9:30 or 10:00 is when they tend to all go out, and it's all pretty much at the same time.
My only concern, it was noted, potentially using motion-activated lighting. So if that's going to be, if that's going to be, I think a butters may actually prefer a constant light as opposed to a light constantly coming on, not and strobing all night during operations.
Generally, what I do is I, I'll send this to a lighting company, and they'll tell them, this is, they want one foot candle light, amount of light per second, they'll tell me where the holes need to be.
Yeah. And just, and I think the, where you mentioned the lighting bylaw, just make sure that we're meeting that, complying with that. Okay. Okay. So we have a few different updates required to the plans. Are there any of the questions we have for the applicant at this time? Otherwise, I, yes, I would, yes, Ms. Betry, if you'd like to speak, I'd be happy to hear. Could you say your name and address?
Hi, please. Hi, Brian, can you hear me?
I can, Pam.
Oh, okay, thank you. I'm Pam Betry, I live at 166 South Washington Street, which is just directly right in front of where this site plan is going to take place. So on all the plans, there's no, at any time, none of my driveway is marked out. So I'm trying to figure out where your access road is coming out. It kind of looks like, see, if you look at my property, which is what, 11547, that's my property, you know, my driveway is not seen, so I'm trying to figure out where your access road is coming out in relationship to my home.
It's, it's just to the west of Lopez Drive. Lopez Drive.
Oh, yes, if you look at Lopez Drive, sir, to the left of, yeah, keep going, that's my property, correct, thank you.
Well.
If you look at all the maps, you never show any of my driveway.
That's wrong.
So I'm trying to figure out that access road that you're putting in to get to your parking lot, where it's coming out in relationship to my property, directly across.
That's, it's probably a good, thank you for, it's probably a good thing to mark and just note as we review the access driveway. Definitely. It is not shown on the plans.
Yeah, because it kind of looks like it's almost close to where my driveway is, so we're pulling out and stuff like that, but I can't even say that because it's, I don't know that.
Okay. Did you have any additional comments or questions?
Okay, Brian.
Did you have any additional questions, Ms. Betry?
Yeah, about the tra, are you planning on doing a traffic study? Or have you done one? Because this road is treacherous. Or have you done one? Because this road is treacherous. People from the industrial park found South Washington Street, so they're, the traffic when they're leaving work and even going to work, so they're using South Washington Street. I mean, my grandson gets on a third, he goes to therapeutic school, he has a van. With the lights are on, these people still go around, and they don't even stop the, uh, the school van with the, the lights flashing. I've been here like over 20 years at this location, and, uh, there's been at least 10 accidents. I had feds all along the frontage of my homes, and it's now, it's gone because of all the accidents. Because if you look at the road, it's a lot more curvier. It's kinda deceiving when you're coming up South Washington Street. It's not straight. I mean, and I supplied some pictures, but I'm having some issues trying to send them to Brian. Um, so there is a lot of traffic going on now, and an increase in traffic with all these cars. Now, maybe the vans are gonna go down towards the industrial park, but when they're coming with their personal vehicles to, you know, to get their, get their vans, they're not gonna be coming up there, they're gonna be coming down South Washington. It depends on their location and where they, and where they live, you know?
They're gonna be coming everywhere they're.
The increase of traffic is gonna, for the parking lot is gonna cause some, uh, I mean, cause maybe possible more, um, issues. And, um, so that's, and, and we've got into, see, you see the curve? So it kinda curves a lot more. Uh, you can see the picture I sent, there's a good, there's a good one of, uh, coming up the road. It's just more visual. I mean, and then if you look at your site plan pictures, it kinda looks more like straight. So it's deceiving. They come around and you can't really see, and they're flying up the road, they don't even listen. Now, trucks are not even supposed to go up, there's a, there's a thing down there, that's, that, that's happening. Even like our neighbor who has the grid workers, he tells the guys here, say, well, this is coming down the road. So my property's to the left. So the bend starts there. Alright, there, see? That's, yeah, that's my house, and that's the truck coming down, you can see the bend. So it's a lot more curvier, so there's like no sight, uh, and then they go around the turn, so there's a lot of accidents. And where that truck is, it kinda looks where that access road may be, which is kinda making me nervous, see? Cause there's my driveway, um, yeah, I kinda zoomed in, you can see it, it's like a V. And then down here is like not really a driveway, it's not paved, but we go, we have a barn there, so we go down there. We drive there a lot, you know, at Park Plaza, whatever. Um, so that's it, cause Lopez Drive is to the right of that.
Okay.
Of course, the wetlands, there's such an abundance of matter wildlife that, that, that live in that area, they call it their home. You guys tagged a deer, and a female deer, and she's been there for years, and she comes, cuts across the street and comes and eats a crab apple tree. She's had like two, she's had twins, two different sets of twins. So there is a lot of, you know, going around, you know, a lot of animals and stuff live there. And I purged my home because I was, you know, thrilled with it, so, oh, there's gonna be, those are wetlands, no one's gonna build over there. You know, and we kinda like the privacy. Uh, it's just gonna change the whole thing. And like the danger to the wetlands, like you can try to do your best, but I don't know, I don't, you know, that's why you protect them, you know?
No, thank you. And this is something that they're meeting with the Conservation Commission as well to talk about all that stuff.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening, I appreciate it.
Thank you for sticking with us for two and a half hours.
Ah, you're fine. I had to get up and down a little bit to take care of my grandson that I have, so, I apologize for that. And I don't know how to take care of it all. I know, you guys are all computer literate, computer literate.
No worries. Have a great, have a great rest of your day.
Have a nice evening and I, I appreciate you listening and taking the time.
Thank you. Okay. And I do have, see additional comment in the chat?
Tracy, you're the neighbor.
Yeah. And, uh, Mr. DeGrasso, we can't take comments in the Zoom chat into the meeting minutes, so if you'd like to speak and enter that into the record, um, you can just come off mute and say your name and address. Otherwise, uh, we'll take it as a warm and fuzzy, but.
Good evening, I have one, no, I have no voice right now, so I apologize for that, but I'm Tracy DeGrasso, I live at 172 South Washington Street, and I just wanna say Pam, great job. Her concerns are our concerns as well. When we bought our house about 10 years ago, like all this is great, there's, you know, woods around, we have like great neighbors, but they're not too close, but not too far away, and all of a sudden, you know, like there's a parking lot coming in, and we're concerned about the traffic, we're concerned about, um, just the increased noise level, um, killing wildlife, the conservation, um, I mean, it's a beautiful area, and I, I, the concerns about previously, because we've been here for a while, but all those concerns are our concerns too, and just, you know, Norton used to be like a farm town, and it's just getting built up, and it's frustrating. So thank you for listening to me, and thanks Pam for your voice tonight.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. DeGrasso. We appreciate your comments, as, as much as it may have not been kind to your throat, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
I have a couple of ones, Tim.
Please.
Um, since we said the vehicles are gonna be living in this parking lot, where are they gonna be registered? Typically, they're all registered out of town, out of state, or they have cars from everywhere. If they're living in town, um, there's a reason why they're town, there's excess tax. That'd be my first, um, comment. Second comment is, I think a traffic study is definitely warranted, especially being an industrial zone or butting a residential zone. I'd like an answer about the, uh, registration of vehicles, specifically because the company's located out of town, is not in the same town.
Okay, the registration of the, of the trucks?
Where are they gonna be registered to?
Okay.
We don't need an answer to, an answer tonight, there's, uh, there's levels of, um, research and evaluation, different things that, we know that you need to do as it relates to the project. As it relates to the traffic study, I don't disagree with you, I think, and we went through it a lot of this with the previous application, and one of the guidelines was an addition of 100 vehicles.
Mm-hmm.
We have the 155 spaces, so from a DOT guideline standpoint, it does seem to be warranted.
I mean, by specific, if this was in the middle of the industrial zone, or the middle of industrial park, I probably wouldn't care. But since it's a butts residential, I think it's more than warranted.
Okay.
Actually, you've got more than that. But it's 155. It is, it is industrial, we couldn't do this if it wasn't an industrial zone.
Correct, but it butts a residential zone, it was.
Okay. So in terms of, uh, you mentioned that Amory had done peer review with Conservation for the stormwater?
Correct, yeah.
Was there any other peer review set up as part of this process?
This is, that's what.
That's all?
Conservation did it.
And are you opposed to a traffic study, um, as it relates to this area in terms of a peer review? Or a, as a traffic study and a, uh, to review?
It is, it's, 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 it's.
Is that something that you need to discuss, so that they can get back to us on, we can do that?
Yeah, what's, what's involved, I mean, this is the industrial zoning, according to the building inspector, before a marketplace allowed for, for this use.
Allows the use, but you're asking for a special permit in a butts residential zone.
I think everything butts the, the, the zone, I mean, how, how far, is there any rules that says how far the, the, the abutment has to be? I don't know.
I'm not your lawyer.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you say a butts, it could, uh, the abutment could be a mile away, I don't know.
Do you have houses right across the street?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yep.
I don't think that we can speak as to specifically what actions would be taken, would be needed for a traffic review in terms of what they would do, what they would wanna put down for machine counts or something like that. If you don't wanna do a traffic study, you can say, I don't wanna do a traffic study. That's something that we can take into consideration as we review the project.
Alright, so there's two.
But I know we have the, the lighting plan and the landscape plan, um, as additional.
Fire department.
Fire department. I mean, which is for both.
Well, those two things I can get done quickly. A traffic study, that's.
That would take time, I, I understand. And then, other open questions that we had were in terms of the vehicle registration potentially. And then are there additional items for, uh, the applicant to review and get back to us on for the next time they're here?
I think if we could have some clarity on the security, if there's gonna be a gate, I think that's important.
Okay. Okay.
I don't disagree, it's, it's not a bad idea, I think it's probably in the best interest of the applicant as well.
Yeah. The tenant may, may be planning to put it on their own, that's kind of, that may be the situation.
Right.
Okay.
Does, uh, industrial buffer apply in this case?
Yes.
Yes?
I think so.
Should we get the appropriate landscaping for that?
We'd have to. And we have to look at that. We're ready for, we'll have a landscape plan, and we need to make sure it follows that buffer. Okay. In terms of, in terms of timing, um, our next meetings are the 17th and the 31st of January. As I said for the last applicant, the 17th is filling up. If you would like to take the 31st, that might be, are you open to the 31st?
I mean, I could, the stuff that I'm working on, the landscape plan and those other items, I could do that, the traffic study, I, that's.
It's a, it's a determination of traffic, of the traffic study, yes. But we have to continue to a, a certain date.
Yeah.
So we can continue to the 17th or the 31st.
Well, we'll go for the 17th, I can get everything else done.
The, the caution there is that that's a very full meeting, you'd probably be on the agenda later than you were tonight.
Yeah.
Cause we have town meeting articles as well.
It's the, the 17th or the 31st, if you tell me.
I mean, for me, you know, I've been working on this for so long, I mean, it's, 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 uh, I, I wanna, I wanna see it done. I mean, it seems we're putting, putting a lot of hours.
If you put me in this, in the night, I'd all, I'd.
It's, it's looking like as big a meeting as tonight, if not longer, so I'm giving you that warning. Okay? Okay. Do we have any additional comments or questions?
Just from the board or from anybody?
Uh, if you'd like to come up and speak, you certainly can, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, need to, uh, not turn around for you.
Just quickly, just seeing.
If you just go to the podium, and again, just state your name and address for this, I'd go right to you.
Yeah. Dylan Clary, 158 South Washington Street, Pam's neighbor on the other side. I just wanted to thank the board for all the questions you asked, because those are pretty much all the questions I had. Um, and Pam, Tracy did a great job, uh, with the questions. I do think the traffic study is super important, I'm gonna reiterate what Pam said, people fly down that road, I had someone flip into my yard beginning of the year. Had other cars hit my edges, all sorts of stuff. Uh, talking to a landscaper who's been in Norton forever, doing my landscaping, said he's come across many cars in my yard from before I lived there. So it is dangerous, so definitely gotta make sure, uh, we are keeping that, you know, in mind. I have a one-year-old, you know, keep things safe. And then, yeah, I mean, it's a nice quiet area, I'd like to keep it quiet. I mean, Amazon, they work seven days a week, so Saturdays, Sundays, it's a lot of noise, a lot of traffic. And as Pam said, it's a lot, a lot of wildlife, uh, it's a nice area, so keep it that way. That's all I got. Thanks for listening.
And I apologize for not turning around, is there any? Okay. Are there any other further comments, uh, before motion to potentially continue?
A motion to continue, SPR 17404, SP 17406, to Amory 17.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion on the motion to continue? There are none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Extentions? Okay. See you in a D. And if for whatever reason you don't feel that you're ready to present on the 17th, or just let the staff know, and he'll, um, probably continue for a session. Okay. The final item on our agenda today is SP 1683, and a site review.
Yes.
1685, 78 East Main Street. This is VHB Inc. for the proposed town hall. So I'll let you gentlemen get set up, I apologize for keeping you, that is, I had to put somebody last.
No problem. We drew the correct straw.
You drew the best straw. I'm gonna step away for two minutes here, just a first and a second, uh, while you get set up. You should have the ability, if you have a tablet or something, if you wanna share on the screen, you should be able to, otherwise Brian, drive that. Yeah, Brian, do you have our, our quick presentation? Mini marathon for you guys, huh?
Mini.
Hey, you keep your parrot at least, right?
I did, I'm going very slow, though.
Thanks, everybody.
Any form?
I had one in the car for the drive home.
Thank you. Just all day. I'll try and keep it brief.
Hi, Jim.
All the rules they told you, I'm not.
Only half.
All of them. We have, we have another committee member, I think, on the floor, I was chairman.
We'll send the jackets over there.
Probably just want to pack.
Everybody needs a break.
Long day.
Long day.
I used to be in at 7:00 AM, I'm about to go, so.
That's when I'm free, you know?
Really? What time are you out? 11:00.
It, it could be worse, we did have one that went, I forget what the record was, but I don't wanna repeat it. I, I believe it, I believe it started with a one, and it had a colon right after.
I used to be the chairman of the, the, the commission of my town, we'd go like 12, 13.
Oh, my God.
I, uh.
You can't stop.
Every meet, every week.
Yep.
Okay. So, I think everybody's back. Yep, okay. So.
Brief introduction, hi, my name's Ed Sefun, architect with DPW Architect. Just kinda give you a brief overview, and then, um, John will walk you through the more technical pieces of the site. I need to point, so, if you don't mind.
Go for it.
The, um, campus plan as it's set up here has the new town hall sort of set in the back, behind the vacant lot currently. This is the existing town hall and fire department to the left, the police station to the right, DPW to the back, just for orientation. We tried to set this up with the notion that in the future, there's gonna be a cohesive municipal complex. And the central parking lot in front here is really meant to be the public parking lot to serve. And, the central parking lot in front here is really meant to be the public parking lot, to serve all three of these buildings, as well as overflow from the library. The lot to the left of the building is really intended to serve for staff during the day, and then during the evening, when there's big events in town or meetings, that could be used for the general public as well. Based on budget realities, we did need to scale back, originally, we had tried to do some more work around the library, we couldn't squeeze that into this budget, but the intention is to continue this at a future phase. There's also a connection road here, to get behind the police department, back to the DPW, to facilitate more in-site circulation, to take the pressure off of Main Street. Right now, that's currently an alternate, I just wanted to set that stage from the beginning, if the budget allows, that's been ranked as number one by the committee, it'd be the first thing that gets accepted. But, it's sort of the general lay to land. The other thing that we took in terms of the design objectives was trying to create some more character along East Main Street. With the work that's just been recently done by the state, it's very difficult, particularly at night, to delineate where the edge of the road is, where the pedestrian zone is. There's a sea of blacktop in front of the fire department, out of necessity for operations. So, we did take a really hard look at trying to get some more green between the new parking lot and East Main Street, keeping a small visitor parking lot, essentially where it is now, in front of town hall, but giving it more of buffer and edges. And then, trying to minimize that, I'm gonna call it the tarmac in front of the fire station, and strike. Because the state has done bituminous sidewalks, the only thing you have is that thin granite curb that delineates it, and it disappears where it dives down. So, we wanna strike that zone, so that it's very clear where the edge of the road is relative to that tarmac. And then, again, operationally trying to pinch down where the fire station comes out with the ambulance on the side, again, to give it more definition. When you get down by the library, it changes in character really quickly. So, you know, we're trying to set the stage, and then with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Thanks, Ed, you stole all my thunder. So I'm John Staubach from VHB, I'm the civil engineer, and can we move forward the presentation? I'm sure you're all familiar with the existing additions where you're at the library, I'll move to the next slide. So, the fourteen thousand four hundred square foot town hall, one hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces, including the parking, twenty-six spaces for the fire department, the seventy-five for the public, and fifty for town hall employees. So a hundred and fifty-eight spaces required, based on zoning, looking at kind of two different scenarios, the daytime operations, and the number of employees in the, in the town hall, and then looking at the nighttime events with the, the meeting space. Hundred and fifty-six spaces required, a hundred and fifty-eight spaces provided, including all the required ADA spaces. Go to the next slide. We meet all of the dimensional requirements for the VC zone that the building is placed in, all the setback requirements for the building, we meet the maximum building coverage, we meet the minimum, the maximum building height, and all the yard setbacks for the building. Next slide. We did receive a variance for the parking, the town hall staff, employee parking, we received a variance for the proximity of the parking to the residential butters, that was approved by the zoning board. And you can see our parking summary, the daytime employees, basically forty-six spaces required for daytime employees, twenty-six for the fire department, resulting in seventy-two required in the daytime, and then the two hundred and sixty space assembly area, requiring a hundred, a hundred and thirty plus the twenty-six for the fire department. And it's unlikely that those two things would happen simultaneously, where you've got all the fire department staff at, at the station during the nighttime, when there's a town hall meeting. Next slide. This shows our stormwater management areas, the, basically, the system flows from East Main Road up to the top of your page. We have a grass channel here with pretreatment, that flows into a series of rain gardens, continues flowing up to the top of your page. We also have, in the parking lot, we have a subsurface infiltration system, the test pits for that system, as well as the septic system, were observed by the Board of Health Agent. And, all of our stormwater management is below the peak rates from existing conditions on all storm event, events that were evaluated. We meet all of the, the town stormwater regulations, as well as MASTEP stormwater regulations. Next slide. And two of these services, we have a new sewer service from the town hall and fire department, as well as, that runs back to the top of the page, where we have a new septic field. And water services are provided from East, East Main Street, a couple of new hydrants. Next slide. That's our septic field, it's back behind the public works garage, have a new septic tank, and it's a pressure dosing system. Next slide. These are utility services, so we have new gas and all new utility services for the new town hall, rerouting existing connections between the fire department and the DPW garage, that are impacted by the placement of the town hall, so those essentially wrap, wrap around you. You can see the electric service and the telecom service wrap around the town hall, and connect to the, to the DPW garage. And, next slide. So I have Matt Keely with me online, and he'll present the, the traffic evaluation of the site.
Thanks, John, can everybody hear me okay? Great. So, for the record, my name is Matt Keely, I'm a traffic engineer with VHB, as part of our submitted, we included a traffic impact assessment that was dated November tenth of this year. Our study focused mainly on the, the existing driveways, so the two fire department driveways, the two town hall driveways, police department driveway, and the public works driveway. Our analysis periods focused on the main community periods, which are seven to nine AM and four to six PM, we conducted our counts back in May of twenty-two. And all of those intersections, we also did a crash history, and we also looked at that sort of segment of, of East Main Street as a whole, in terms of crash history. And the results of our assessment showed that all the intersections, as well as the segment as a whole, were below the Mass Stop District crash rate, though we don't see any safety concerns there. Next slide, please. In terms of traffic generation, we're not expecting the, the function of the offices to change significantly, so we are not anticipating any new traffic during the typical peak hours. But as, as you know, there's gonna be meetings held here at night, so there will be additional traffic later in the evening, but that does not necessarily coincide with our peak hour, which during the evening was four thirty to five thirty PM. In terms of site access, I know Ed touched on this a little bit earlier, there are any minor modifications to the, the fire department driveways, in terms of the curb cuts there, and how the, the parking is accessed. And the town hall, the primary town hall driveway is gonna be shifted to the east, you know, immediately adjacent to the, the police station driveway. We did an assessment of site distance for all the access points, and all the, all the driveways as they exist now, and will in the future, exceed the site distance requirements for, for those side access points. So overall, we're, our assessment concludes that we're not expected to have any significant impact during the peak hours along the stretch of East Main.
And I'll present the landscape, Christina Stevens from IBI, I couldn't make it tonight, but she gave me some guidance that, you know, some of the landscape components that I'd like to review with you. So, basically with the, with the new town hall landscape, the main feature is a, is a plaza space, in this front area in here. Which provides an open and welcoming first impression, and is designed for a variety of uses, including small gatherings, and for individual use such as lunch breaks, and waiting for Uber rides. The plaza celebrates the wooded nature of both the immediate area and the town as a whole. It's designed to evoke a forest floor where twigs have fallen, sightlines from the new vehicular roadway entry. This entry orient people towards the main entrance of the, of the town hall. There are two entrances, one for the public and one for the, the town hall employees, and at each entrance, there'll be bike parking, for, with a total of fourteen bike parking spaces. Within the plaza area, there's open access to the lawn area, which provides views to the adjacent rain gardens, so we have a rain garden here, and another one there, so there's views from that plaza to the rain garden areas, which will promote awareness of rain infrastructure. The planting strategy includes native species where possible, and all plantings are chosen to blend into the forest in character. The trees are chosen for both fall and winter interest, as well as, as summer, for kind of a four-season interest. And then there's a mixture of evergreens and other plants to achieve that. There are, there is beautiful large trees on this side, between the library and the fire department, and those are all preserved, that was important to, to maintain. And, there is a planted seed mix that will be used to stabilize the sloped area behind the town hall. And large evergreen trees will provide both buffers to sound and views to the public works garage site, and there's a seed mix proposed to surround the, the rain garden areas. The last component of the landscape design is a screening strategy, and so to mitigate the proximity of the town hall parking area to the adjacent properties, we have proposed a six-foot-high wood screen fence, and deer-resistant evergreen plantings that will reach a, a six-foot mature height as well. And this strategy is implemented along the two properties that are most affected. So right here, these edges. And all the existing stone walls onsite will remain intact outside the limit of work, so there are some stone walls that are affected by the construction of the building and the parking areas, but everything outside that will remain. And that, I think, sums up the landscaping. Ed, do you wanna go through some of the renderings?
Sure. Keep it brief, but, new two-story wood frame building here, you're seeing a view of the entry plaza and the main public entrance to the building. The story and a half piece is actually the main select boardroom, meeting space within the building, so there's a direct connection between the inside and the outside.
That's the planning boardroom, it's not the select.
Well, interestingly enough, there's enough meeting space in this building, you can choose. We also have another large public meeting room right at the end of the gable there, as well, so you've got options. We tried to do something really in character with a lot of the older buildings up and down, center of town, trying to blend it in. I know our direct examples here, right adjacent to us, don't really evoke that, but we're thinking ahead.
This is much better.
Thank you. And as John said, this, from this main public entrance here, there's really a direct connection both into the building, as well as to the other adjacent structures. You can go to the next one, I think we had, oh, I guess that was it, so, nice and brief.
I know I have a few questions, I don't know if they, John, you may be the, maybe the guy, I don't know.
Sure.
If you wanna defer to others, let me know. Three of them relate to parking.
Yep.
Looking at, looking at existing additions now, this is obviously the top-down view, to the right of the existing town hall, you obviously have that hill going right down, what's the grade, where does the grade change? And how does that work?
Part of that area is getting hogged out a little bit, in order to make this grade work, I can actually point it out.
Yeah.
We're trying to keep, what you're not seeing here is the, where the existing food pantry is now, that one-story piece, that's getting demolished, we're trying to keep the piece in the back, in order to maintain access and egress out of the basement. So, the grade in here actually can get dropped slightly, because there's not any direct connection along that side. There is actually a set of site stairs right here, you'll see on the enlarged plans, to traverse from the lower parking lot up to that existing lot in front of the town hall now.
So there will essentially, there would be a drop-off behind those trees, basically?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
From East Main down.
Yeah.
Yes.
In terms of the amount of parking spaces, I know with the senior center, we went through a whole thing of, what ITA group do you put this in, are there defined groups for evening meeting spaces in the ITA, is it up to do that this time?
I'm not familiar with ITA, yes.
Like the trip gen, or the, sorry. The parking spaces that were required, there wasn't, was there a hard and fast, like it fits in this category based on the bylaw? Or did you have to find, there was one?
I thought there were two.
Yeah.
I have to go back and think.
Yeah, if you go back in the slides, it does, it does note the two evaluations that were done, basically the daytime and the nighttime.
I know with the senior center, that you kinda, you kinda had to find.
Yeah, because there wasn't anything that directly fit that use group.
Yeah.
I think this was a little clearer.
Yeah, it was based on, so daytime, the total number of employees.
Yeah, that would be, that was easy, yeah.
And then we looked at the assembly space, based on the occupancy of those large meeting spaces.
Okay, so you just wanted occupancy.
Yeah.
Let's try and get something more realistic.
And, just with the parking layout itself, I'm not sure what page makes the most sense to look at.
I'm going to go to the last slide, or for the first slide?
Just determine where the ADA spots are in the, are they, I see some of them right in that top-left corner there.
Public lot is here, we also have a few for the old town hall slash fire station in front here, and we also have some on the side for staff.
Yeah, so each, each entrance kind of has their own ADA spaces in each lot, so we meet the, the requirements for the ADA spaces required for each individual lot, as well as providing them proximate to the, the closest space to each entrance to the building.
Yeah, I wasn't sure if it might make, not if it made sense to have something at the, let's see, the back lot, the bottom-right corner, kind of the closest point in the lot to the town hall, that doesn't involve crossing the driveway.
This being the back lot?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's spaces right here.
Something in the bottom, kind of.
Something in the bottom, kind of, I don't, I don't know if that other entrance to town hall is going to have.
So this entrance.
The back entrance to town hall now is kind of a, you only use it if you work here.
That's pretty much the way this is going to be set up, that side entrance is really going to be for staff only?
These would remain at the accessible entrance to that building.
Right, to the, to the old town hall.
Right, correct.
There's not a, there's not an ADA spot necessarily close to the plaza that doesn't involve crossing the driveway.
Correct.
Okay. And the other question I have is sewer. You mentioned a septic system, this isn't tying into sewer even though there's sewer on East Main?
That's right.
There actually is no sewer on East Main.
There isn't?
No.
Didn't the library have to, didn't the library just hook up to it, like, six months ago?
Maybe Jim can comment on that.
Jim Slattery, chairman of the building committee.
Yeah.
I don't want to keep you here till midnight, but I went before the water commission two weeks ago. We discussed sewer, and the water commissioner says, well, we're going to put a sewer line down Elm Street, I believe the other street here is. And I asked the deadly question of when. Well, we plan on having it done, and I said, the building committee planned on a septic system because your history of building sewer lines does not come in on target date. And we want to move into this town hall to get out of every other town building, so the meetings are in one place. And we said, we're going to put in a septic system, so we're upgrading the septic system, we're building another septic system besides the one that's already there. But none of the town buildings along this campus are connected to septic.
Sewer.
Sewer.
The library isn't on sewer? I thought the library was on sewer.
I don't believe so.
Okay.
I could be wrong, but.
Mr. Chairman, see, we're in a dead zone here, one sewer line comes from the west and goes through, we can call it, down Pine Street. The other one stops at the hump in the road and goes down the rail trail.
Okay.
We were, our original plan was to hook into North Cottage, but that was not an acceptable system to the water department.
Okay.
Well, it didn't have enough capacity and it was compromised.
And it was a private system.
Also, it wasn't acceptable to the water department.
You had lots of issues.
For multiple reasons.
Understood. Now, I thought I remembered that the library was closed at some point because they were hooking up to the sewer or something like that, so.
Could be.
That may just be me misremembering something and ignoring.
I'll yield to your memory versus mine.
Oh, you put some little space in there. Okay. I think that's all the questions I had written down during the presentation, so I'm going to stop hogging the metaphorical microphone.
Just curious what's happening to the old town hall.
It's going to remain presently. It's going to be restricted use, and it's going to just stay as it is, with the exception of that one-story piece that we're going to demolish.
I know the original plan was to shrink it down and the fire department still used some of it.
Correct. The original plan actually anticipated demolishing the original section of that building, but due to cost, we had to leave it be.
Maybe some empty storage areas. That's okay?
I mean, it's certainly right to come down in the future, based on what we're setting up here with the site plan.
Are we expected to approve both plans, the original and the alternate, at the same time?
The alternate meaning the access road to the DPW?
Yes.
Let's see. Is it on the, I'll answer your question with a question. Is that shown on the plan set?
Yes, well, it is, there's a version for each.
Okay. That is a question, then, so we can't approve, well.
It's indicated as an alternate on the plan.
Okay. I don't think I've ever approved two plans for one site. Maria, do you have a thought process in that respect? Other than, my default would be to approve it with the alternate drive there, and then if it doesn't get built, then that is a modification to the site plan?
I think that's how we proceed. If it's in the budget, or if it's part of the budget, I'd approve it.
It's not in the budget, it's the budget waiting list. So, so I guess then we would potentially approve it without, and then a modification if it was needed to add it back in.
We'll be optimistic. We'll know on the day of the bid.
I'm worried about mechanics of approving the plan here, I'm not worried about, I'll leave all the discussions to people.
Do you foresee any issues whether it's built or not built? I mean, it's possible.
This is purely, which plan, which plan set do we approve? And I don't speak, I can't speak for future, make up future boards, but I don't see that being seen as anything under the minor modification to a site plan, so.
To help you make the decision, the bids that have come in so far, and this is speculation, have been underbid to the point that we will probably include all our alternates, and that's the first one. So even if they raise their bids, which we're hoping they won't or can't, which are all the change orders or anything else, my personal opinion is that will go in, and I think you have no problem, oh, you're the chairman, I can.
That's fine, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I just want to point out that what Jim was talking about is community center bids, the town hall bids haven't come back yet.
They haven't gone out.
They haven't gone out yet.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
Okay. But, I think, I approve one, and definitely need to make a modification at a later date to do that to the site plan.
Would make the most sense to approve the.
Provable, yeah.
The most aggressive, meaning the one with the alternate, and then you have to take that forward.
And then the modification would be a minimum, would be a reduction in impact.
Right, and then you don't have to worry about conditions related to the other area.
All the conditions would be part of the bid.
Yeah. That makes sense. Okay, so the decision would be to approve the plan set with.
The alternate.
The alternate. Okay. Do we have additional questions for the applicant at this time?
Don't we consider peer review of the, I'm fine with the traffic assessment, seems reasonable, but the stormwater and site plan reviews, that's something we would want peer reviewed?
I believe there already is a peer review underway, but we have not, for stormwater, but we have not received the comments yet.
And this, for this project, this stormwater peer review would flow through conservation, is that?
Yes.
Okay. Does that answer your question?
Yep, I'm happy, thank you.
Okay. Trula, I'm going to ask your question, if you didn't get a chance to ask. Are there, I know they mentioned the deer-resistant plantings and the evergreens on the back left, are the other, we have hungry deer in the north. Do we feel that the other species are deer-resistant to as much a degree as deer believe anything if they're evergreen?
Right.
I know, I realize that.
I don't know enough to answer that question.
All I'm going to say is that all the species were indicated in the landscape plan, and if there's an issue, we won't have to change anything else.
Right.
We only want to solidify the potential, I guess, mostly universe, I did not see any Arbivites, they do have Hosta, but there are varieties of Hosta that are deer-resistant.
So it appeared to be that already deer-resistant was the issue, okay.
I didn't see an issue, usually I look for Arbivite, that just bugs me.
We started there for what it's worth, and then we hit the same reaction.
I know you always ask the questions.
I do. Well, I hate the look of having planted a row of Arbivite in my backyard without being aware of the situation. And having to rip them all out and replace them. I am now very cognizant, and you can drive around and just see the hourglass Arbivites everywhere.
Right.
Did we have any questions or additional comments at this time? Otherwise, I'm going to see if any members of the public who are here, in person or virtually, wanted to comment. And I don't think we've given the applicant anything that would require continuance at this point. Unless there's things that they feel they're waiting for. So I'm going to stop rambling and see if, and say again, if anybody in the Zoom meeting would like to use the reactions function to raise your hand, and be happy to hear you speak. And I'll turn around and see if anyone here would like to comment in relation to the project. Kevin, you are here?
I'm, no, I'm fine with it.
Okay. We don't have Peter here, so I have to ask somebody.
I'll make a comment.
Please do.
Probably get me in trouble, but.
That's okay.
The, the intention of the building committee is to save the taxpayers as much money as possible, and one of the things, we were mentioning the white clad board building, we had it originally brick, but in order to save money, and I think it was around $80,000?
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred thousand. I'm not a builder.
It's a serious.
We, we cut the, we cut the brick out and put in the clad board, synthetic clad, whatever it is. As far as the parking lot, unlike the people that preceded us, we are putting charging stations in, we do live in the 21st century, even though I have a flip phone. I, I think that they're very misguided if they don't, even though they lease their vehicles, I think, but. The other thing I would ask, when, I don't know if you're going to make, if you're going to make a motion to approve, don't even pay attention to this, but we've already spent $2 million on educated professionals to do all our thoughts and minds and jump through the Hundred Norton hoops, and we've gotten approval from zoning, we've gotten approval from water, we've gotten approval from the Board of Health, we're looking for your approval, and if you don't do it tonight, which is your prerogative, I would ask the chairman's discretion that when you continue us to whatever date in March of 2025, or whatever it is, that you reverse the order. We waited the longest, I'm paying these gentlemen through your tax money to sit here and listen to 17 other things, so are the other applicants paying their lawyers, but I think it's only fair that the person who is number one and got in here and out of here in 10 minutes should be number 17 the next time, and the person who is number 17, which is us, should be number one. I would just ask you to, that's within, I think it's within your prerogative, and if you have any questions, I'm around town, I'm all over the place, I'm more than glad to answer any questions, and probably give you the wrong information, and Kevin will correct me.
Thank you. I appreciate your thoughts. And I promise not to have you last if we need to.
And what is it, Hardy Board signed it, I'm not sure?
Yes, part of it is.
I kind of like it.
Thank you.
Okay. So again, if there's anything that we need to ask the applicant to get back to us on, let's ask them now. I think that, I don't think there's any questions that we've come up with that necessary to continue at this time.
A motion to close the public hearing.
I think Laura beat you a little bit, Eric. So a motion for Alan and a second from Laura to close the public hearing for S. Site Plan, Special Permit and Site Plan Reviews 1683 and 1685. Is there any further discussion on the motion to close the public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Is there any other action that we would like to take on these agenda items? I think we would probably take them as two individual motions.
Motion to approve SP 16883.
Before we do that, can we, can somebody who's in permit eyes make sure that we're talking about the right one with the right number?
At the. 8.5 is the ZBAs and 8.3 is the special permit.
8.3 is the special permit, perfect, thank you. So I think that was the correct motion?
Correct.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay.
Was that 8.5?
8.3.
8.3 is a special permit.
And then the other one?
8.5 is the site plan, so we're going to do the two different motions.
So I wrote that as ZBAs.
That's okay. Yeah, because I know in prior session, you got the numbers confused, we made the motions like.
The site plan review is 17125.
17125?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve the special permit. Any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay.
The bell's ringing, motion to approve Site Plan Review 17125.
Second.
And just to confirm, this is the site plan set, which includes the additional driveway to the DPW?
Yes.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to approve the site plan. Is there any further discussion on that motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Okay?
Thank you.
We will.
Happy holidays.
And we'll make sure.
Go home and warm up.
And if we can put this decision at the, the front of the line, as implied, that would be a good idea.
We'll try to get radiant heat in the floor of your meeting room.
That would be awesome.
The public hearing is closed now, you can't say anything.
You'll probably be the only ones still around.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, so, I don't have anything else for the agenda this evening? I think that we have. Unless anybody else has anything else, the only things we have to do are sign the ANRs before we leave the room. Otherwise, we'll be looking for a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have motion and a second to the hearing. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Abstentions? Thank you very much, everyone.